I'm here.
Okay, so, um, welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. This is two thousand and twenty. Um, we are here today for the Flagstaff City Council's regular work session. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice should we so choose to do so. With that, uh, Mr. Aslan, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It's my honor, Madam Mayor. Um, everybody, please stand if you can and look at the wonderful, beautiful flag that, uh, Councilmember Odegaard put on the chat window. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Aslan. Mr. McCarthy, can you please read our mission statement?
Yes, Mayor. The mission of City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance quality of life for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCarthy. Um, we're now down, we're now down to item number three. This will be roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor Evans?
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie?
Present.
Councilmember Aslan?
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard?
Present.
Councilmember Salas?
Present.
Councilmember Whelan?
Present.
Thank you so much. We're now down to item number four. Item number four of our agenda is public participation. Public participation is for items that are not currently on our agenda. So I'm just looking at our, um, our, uh, agenda, and it has item number four. So can I just get some clarification for that? City Clerk? There's nothing. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, we have no public participation at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. We're now down to item number five. Item number five is a review of the draft agenda for September, uh, first, uh, City Council meeting. Council, is there anything you would like to chat about when it comes to this agenda? I do not see, um, any comments for this agenda coming up. Just as a reminder, City Council, if you do have any questions, um, regarding anything on the agenda for the September first meeting, if you would please reach out to our city, uh, manager so he can get that information, those questions answered before the meeting, that would be preferable. We're now down to item number six. Item number six is our case number PZ dash nineteen dash zero zero one two five, update to the zoning code two thousand and twenty, high occupancy housing specific plan.
Hi, Mayor Members of the Council, Dan Simers, uh, with the Planning and Development Services Department. And what I have before you today is the draft text amendment to implement the high occupancy housing plan. Um, as you said, it's case number PZ nineteen zero zero one two five. Uh, we are having a work session today. This is to inform the public and to allow for their suggestions, inform the council, allow for suggestions. Council will not be taking any action today, although comments and suggestions and discussions is encouraged. Uh, why was the high occupancy housing plan adopted? The high occupancy housing plan is just a brief history was adopted in accordance with the regional plan, uh, policy NH one seven to discuss where high occupancy housing or student housing developments could be located that is consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Also is to refine the goals pertaining to high occupancy housing mixed-use, uh, centers and to preserve the character of certain neighborhoods, specifically the existing historic neighborhoods. Uh, today, we're gonna go over that proposed amendment. As you recall, the high occupancy housing plan was adopted in two thousand and eighteen, and it specifically addressed large developments. Uh, back in October eighth on two thousand and nineteen, this council confirmed direction to also address what are called small high occupancy housing plans, also including bedroom-to-bathroom ratios, unit ratios, and a handful of other items that we'll be covering. Furthermore, in the high occupancy housing plan, the request was to, I'm sorry, the policy implementation was to remove the rooming and boarding provisions. Since these are very difficult to enforce since they're private contractual agreements between two parties and the city is not involved. So this is a high-level overview of what we're gonna be going for, going over today. This is a very high, uh, list on you before you. So we're going over the definitions, where the zones are allowed, maximum dwelling unit and bedrooms per acre, uh, specific use requirements, conditional use requirements, bike parking, and transit-specific requirements. So, and I'll come back to this specific one because council did ask for me to return to you about single-family high occupancy housing development. So the definition before you that staff has recommended is a high occupancy housing that's on a lot, uh, more than, less than ten thousand square feet, that's more than five bedrooms, and has a bathroom to sanitation ratio two point one. Now that bathroom to sanitation or bedroom to sanitation ratio is bedroom to bathroom, uh, just using common terms throughout our code, specifically the building code, is a sanitation facility. And I'll come back to this in a few minutes. High occupancy housing also, we're, we're addressing two units. These are your duplexes or two units on a parcel, which is defined as six or more bedrooms and has a bathroom to sanitation ratio less than one point three, which is four bedrooms, three bath. And the, uh, next one is your three units on a lot, or also called a triplex or common terms. This one here allows up to nine bedrooms before, uh, it would be considered a high occupancy housing. Also uses that bathroom to sanitation ratio of one point three. Finally, we're talking about the high occupancy housing developments for four units or greater. These are your larger developments. And this is where a majority of your bedrooms are four bedrooms or more. Uh, there's a handful of units that have a bathroom to sanitation ratio of one point three or greater. Also, each zone has a specific density and a bedroom, uh, maximum that's allowed without a conditional use permit. So we're also talking about those developments that are either in the HOHD or about the transect zones that are not density-based. And finally, with the mixed-use high occupancy housing, it's same as the four unit, but it's obviously a commercial development that has residential as a component. And again, it's twenty percent more of the dwelling units are four bedrooms or more, has that one point three bathroom to sanitation ratio, and if it's in the transect zones, um, or other forms that require that is, has a dwelling unit that's greater than twenty-nine dwellings per acre or seventy-two point five bedrooms per acre. Now, council at our last meeting in June, ju- June eleventh, to be exact, did ask staff to look at some alternative definitions for the, uh, single-family high occupancy housing definition. And working with one of the councilmen, we ca- the definition before you is what we have a staff's recommendation right now. It's a house with more than five bedrooms, uh, on a lot less than twenty, uh, ten thousand square feet, and has a bathroom to sanitation ratio less than one point two, which is essentially five bedrooms, four baths. So you go five, five, five bedrooms, five baths, then you're, you're a high occupancy housing. So the first alternative that ca- that was being proposed is a single-family home, attached or detached, which has a bathroom to sanitation facility ratio one point three. So again, that's five to four or any combination of like ten to eight, or, I'm sorry, not or, and has five or more bedrooms. So that's your first one. So to look at that one, you have five bedrooms or more on a table here. So you got your sanitation facilities running across the top, and then your bedrooms running down along the left-hand side. So those developments, when you look at the one-to-one ratio and greater, would be a, uh, high occupancy housing. And one of the councilmen's will be explaining this a little bit more. He chose to, uh, ask me just to introduce it. So on that part, so anything in green would be considered a high occupancy housing, just a different way of looking at it. The second alternative is a single-family attached or detached dwelling unit with seven or more bedrooms or five or more sanitation facilities. So this particular definition, any dwelling unit, any single-family dwelling unit that's more than seven, seven or more bedrooms would be considered high occupancy housing. Or any single-family dwelling unit with five or more sanitation facilities would be considered high occupancy housing. And this table here demonstrates how that would work with your sanitation facilities across the top, one through eighty-two, and then your bedrooms along the left-hand side, and anything in the blue would be considered high occupancy housing. So seven bedrooms, one bath would be considered high occupancy housing. Seven bedrooms, five baths would be considered high occupancy housing, but a five-bedroom, one bath, or six-bedroom, four bath would not be. So the questions that we have before you today on this particular topic is, does the City Council desire to maintain the staff's definition of, or one of the alternatives? And on these two definitions, or these two alternatives, I'll be happy to take comments. And Mayor, I'm gonna break this up into sections because of the thickness of the topics and go through each section, uh, individually. It, it would be a little bit easier to digest the information instead of waiting to the entire end.
Yeah, so we have Mr. McCarthy who's interested in making a comment, I believe, during this section.
Uh, I am. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just kind of thought the preliminary definition that staff came up with, and I thought it through. And, uh, I just kind of compared it to the street that I live on. And these are kind of standard-size lots. They're all under, um, ten thousand square feet. But at the end of the cul-de-sac, there's a larger lot. And under the staff's preliminary definition, they could have a hundred bedrooms and eighty-two bathrooms and not be considered high occupancy housing. Well, that doesn't make sense, of course. So that's why I would suggest that we go to one of these other definitions. I kind of like the one that says if you have, uh, five or more, uh, bathrooms, or you have seven or more, uh, bedrooms, that you're high occupancy housing. I mean, I think if a house has seven bedrooms, it's high occupancy housing. Now, maybe the number should be eight. I don't know. But conceptually, I think there should be some kind of, um, limit on the number of bedrooms and bathrooms you have. And it isn't that you can't build it. It's just that it's considered high occupancy housing, and you have to get a CUP. At least that's my understanding of it, Dan. So that's my comment for now. Thank you.
Cal, so are there any other comments for this section? Mr. Aslan has a comment?
Yeah, I just want to discuss a couple things. So what is a bedroom exactly? As opposed to, for example, a home office or some sort of storage room or a fitness center or a, a little fitness space, um, how do we legally define a bedroom? And also, uh, just for the sake of clarity, um, for the public discourse, I would like to, um, revisit, uh, the definition of sanitation facility as well. Thank you.
Certainly. The, um, the definition of sanitation facility is any bathroom or toilet room, powder room, that has just a sink and a bathroom. It could be a, uh, a, a three-quarter bath, or it could, which is a bathroom with a toilet, sink, and shower, or a full bath that's a tub, shower, and sink. So any one of those would be considered a, um, sanitation facility as defined in the code currently. The, the purpose of that is, is because you can have, uh, two bathrooms, one shower, uh, that has been used in a lot of the high occupancy housing projects, at least like what I went to school with, uh, does differ, um, with each development. So the intent is, uh, to capture those developments as it pertains to the sanitation facility.
And Dan, so, uh, laundry room that has a utility sink but doesn't have a toilet in it, for example, um, is not considered a sanitation facility?
Not by the definition in the zoning code.
Great. And the bathroom? I, I mean, the bedroom?
If the bedroom has a separate room that has a sink in it, that is not considered a bathroom. But if it has a sink and toilet or, or sink and shower room off that, that would be considered a sanitation. That particular area would be considered a sanitation facility. Like, it's very common today for master suites to have, uh, a bathroom off of their, off of their unit. So that would be considered a, uh, sanitation facility, that room. Uh, and that's one of the, the issues that we had to tackle, um, was the integrated bedroom and bathroom. And we did start seeing a couple developments more recently coming in with the same number of bedrooms and bathrooms, but having the bathroom separate. So we did have to e- exclude the, uh, the, the integration part because it's still meeting the intent of high occupancy housing.
Okay, and my original question about, uh, what is a bedroom? I think that's important if we're, you know, if, if we're going to follow Mr. McCarthy's suggestion of a dwelling with seven or eight or whatever we wanted to find it. Um, is that just rooms? Or is a bedroom a very specific thing and other things can be added to the house as well that are not considered bedrooms?
That is a very good question, as all of them are. The, um, in a, in a development, they need to disclose in their floor plans what room type it is. And that's because the building code, and I'm not an expert in the building code, uh, has very specific requirements for exiting. Uh, it is possible that a room could be, a bedroom can be used as a, an office, or it could be used, uh, or an office could be used as a bedroom and still meet those requirements. So that is, that is a potential, um, issue that could arise, but is not, uh, i- it's foreseen that, that we could have those questions. So, um, is not foolproof, although we are anticipating that somebody may try to circumvent the code in that manner. And I'm look, trying to look up the definition of, uh, bedroom in the building code, so, or at least in the zoning code as you're, as we're, uh, working. So there are other questions while I'm doing that, I can, uh, assist.
So Ms. Whelan has a question. Unless, Mr. Aslan, did you have a follow-up?
Um, no, I'm fine. I, I am waiting on a little bit more information there. I, I, I think we can all imagine different types of rooms that could skirt any, I mean, it, this is gonna be a game of cat and mouse, no matter what we do, I think. But, yeah, we can move on with other questions right now.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Dan, you said we were gonna take this in sections, so I'm wondering if I should hold my questions and comments about parking and those things until a later time.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then I guess I just have a follow-up question on my own. Um, so under option two, I know individuals who actually have five bathrooms or five sanitation facility, facilities in their house. It's a single, um, family household, but they have, I guess, three full bathrooms and then two rooms that have a toilet and a sink. So they technically would have five bathrooms or five, uh, sanitation facilities. So are they to be considered high occupancy housing?
They would be considered high occupancy housing. And that, that's been one of the questions that, um, that's been an ongoing kind of consideration that we've been, uh, playing with because, uh, if you remember, the last time is that the way, the way to circumvent, um, high occupancy housing is to do exactly that. And, uh, we had, we were having that discussion, and if the intent is to try and minimize the impact of high occupancy housing, then those developments would be considered, uh, high occupancy housing.
So I'm gonna, I need to stop and think of for a minute on that one. I'm gonna go ahead and go to Mr. Odegaard, followed by the Vice Mayor, followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, that was my concern also. Um, um, you know, that five number, uh, it just seems too low, um, uh, being realistic. Um, so I definitely think that number needs to be looked at seriously before we make a decision on that, so. Uh, especially the five, uh, or more sanitation facilities. Um, and, because I've been in several houses right here in Flagstaff, you know, that has four bedrooms, um, with four bathrooms, and of course, there's a, a guest bathroom. And so it, it doesn't make any sense to me, so. But, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mc- our Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm, I'm trying to think about what Councilmember McCarthy was, was sharing in his concern. Um, 'cause if, if we did trigger the HOH at a, a smaller size, I'm concerned about the, the requirements that, that developer would have to work within. Um, and I, I originally had thought that staff's, staff's recommendation was on point, but it does seem like there is a, a, a small gap that could be, um, taken advantage of, as Councilmember McCarthy pointed out. But I think it's fairly unlikely. Dan, I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
The, this is a, i- i- it is a challenge with the single family. Uh, we, just kind of going back to October last year and June, just, um, we had a very similar discussion, and the challenge that we have here is when do we call it high occupancy housing? Is it originally, we were proposing anything over four bedrooms, three baths, and then we went up to five bedrooms, four baths. Uh, and that's because we started getting the, we were getting the homes with six bedrooms, six baths, five bedrooms, five baths in this, in the older neighborhoods. And, uh, the concern was that these smaller lot sizes don't affect, um, or, I'm sorry, have a larger effect, um, on the neighborhood. Whereas other areas with larger lots that can accommodate more parking on their lots, um, don't have that necessary, necessary issue. And that's why staff originally put a cap on the ten thousand square foot size limit. Because once you start getting into these larger homes, you start pushing your lot size up, uh, uh, pretty much. And we started seeing, there's especially some of the neighborhoods that we have going on right now to address, uh, just our street improvements that we're trying to do. The smaller lots, less than ten thousand square feet, seventy-five hundred square feet, have issues just parking their own families. Uh, whether it's a, a recreational vehicle, or they have teenagers, um, or more than, uh, four people drive. Uh, so on these smaller lots, we started seeing a significant amount of issues. And with the larger lots, uh, when I went out and did a, just, you know, a visual survey, um, we didn't have those, those particular issues. And, uh, there's not a magic number. You know, you could increase it to ten thou- or fifteen thousand square feet. Um, you know, we were looking at a quarter or an acre, uh, based on the ten thousand square foot size and based on our current zoning standards, uh, that we used the ten thousand to be kind of uniform. But there is a point of diminishing return when it comes to the larger homes and, you know, are, what are we really trying to achieve? And the, the start, we start diminishing that return in my findings uh, on a larger lot sizes where they can provide sufficient parking or sufficient area. And a lot of them are in HOH, HOA communities that, you know, have their own regulations. So the intent originally at council's direction was specifically to address the smaller lots in older neighborhoods. Uh, and that was based on, and that's how staff came up with their recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. As I pointed out in my neighborhood, I have a lot that's over ten thousand, not me personally, but one of my neighbors, that's over, slightly over ten thousand feet. And, uh, I think they have a two-car garage. If not, maybe it's a three-car garage. I'm not sure. The people are living there now, even if they had ten bedrooms, it wouldn't be a problem. But the issue is that someone else could buy that and turn it into a frat house or something. And my guess is that the neighbors would not be very happy about that. It seems that we're very focused on the hub and the standard and buildings that look like that. But I feel that there can be even more of a problem if we start moving these, uh, houses that could be modified and used to be a frat house or a sorority house or just a, a massive student, uh, student housing project in the middle of a regular neighborhood. And if we, if we're not careful with our definitions, we'll in effect be saying, that's okay. Well, it's not okay, you know. And so, okay, where did I come up with seven bedrooms, five, uh, bathrooms? Uh, that just seems reasonable, you know, uh, you know, a lot of houses will have maybe two or three bathrooms. But when you get five or more, that can be kind of, that, that's out of the norm. And anything over seven bedrooms, I would think, is, uh, it's basically, call it what it is. It's high occupancy housing. And if we want to say that's okay, fine, but I think we ought to be careful with our definitions, or we're just gonna be, uh, bamboozled is a good word. So, uh, maybe seven isn't the right number. Maybe it's eight, you know, whatever. But if we're trying to prevent neighborhoods from being taken over by what in, in fact, high occupancy housing, uh, we, if we want to prevent that, we need to, to make rules that do prevent that. Um, I'll leave it at that for now.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, a couple of questions come to mind, and, and I'm thinking more of, uh, is a home, or should a home be built and it, uh, be designed for short-term rentals? And we've seen that, uh, in the larger homes, uh, outside of the downtown, that, uh, we do have seven or more bedrooms and, and they're used for, uh, short-term rentals. So I'm just, I, I just want you to know, uh, Councilmember McCarthy, I, I hear what you're saying. I do share that concern. And I also share the concern of, if we're looking for parking, then where does that fit uh, in a walkable, uh, bikeable community? Um, the whole idea of going lower with the lot size was to protect, um, I believe that the pe- the people that lived in our historic neighborhoods. So it, there's much to consider. So it, there's much to consider, much, much, much to consider. And I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
So I guess I just want to add to this. Uh, Ms. McCarthy, do you have a response?
Well, yeah, I thank you, Ms. Whelan, for your comments. And it occurs to me that in some of these big lots, take Pine Canyon, for instance, these are multimillion-dollar houses. I don't think that neighborhood would be very happy if on one of the the new lots, somebody came in and built a 20-bedroom house that could be used for um student housing in effect, or it could be used for short-term rentals. I think those people would expect the city council to protect them from that type of development. So it isn't just, you know, this is a full range of everything from the hub to, you know, these places that have two-acre lots. I think all of these different neighborhoods and everything in between would care about what we're talking about right now and want us to do something about it. Thank you.
I guess I just want to um circle back to what Mr. Odegaard said and the concern that I think I heard with the Vice Mayor as well as perhaps Councilmember Aslan. Um, you know, as we move forward and we and we whittle this down, um, I do think you have houses here, especially when you are defining sanitation facilities the way they're currently being defined, that are single-family houses with people who have, they're just their families living there that are not um using them for short-term rentals or student housing or whatever, that have five or more sanitation facilities or may want five or more if they're going to build a single-family house. And so I do think I heard Mr. McCarthy saying, you know, we're trying to address issues like the hub, but we need to do so being mindful that we don't create other issues when it comes to um single-family houses and the cost of those single-family houses and the building of those single-family houses here in our city. Um, I see that there is a comment. I'm gonna go to Mr. McCarthy first, then back to Daniel. Who's Daniel? Help me.
Um, Daniel's your uh, is your zoning code administrator.
Thank you, Daniel. I appreciate that. I just didn't recognize your last name. How about, how about we go to Jim and then we go back to Daniel? Mr. McCarthy?
The point I'd like to make, it's not what these houses are being used for, it's what they could be used for.
And I think that that's important, but I also think that um we are projecting in some cases what they could be used for. Now, definitely have issues with some of the houses that are currently be used that way, but we cannot say all of them will be used a certain way. So I just think we need to be mindful of that. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two comments is one of the things that we you would also want to consider is currently in our process, uh, single-family homes do not go through uh a ver- a a review process that's similar to um duplexes and commercial and multifamily homes. These go straight into building permit. And there's a great potential, as outlined in the report, that some of these home builders or just individuals building a home may get caught up in the need for a high occupancy housing conditional use permit, and they have invested a significant amount of money uh in these areas, in this area, and they may not get approved. Um, also, the high occupancy housing is where, as outlined in the plan, the high occupancy housing plan did not address these smaller ones. And we're trying to address that our council's direction. And it is relatively difficult when it comes to single-family homes. Now, as it pertains to the sanitation facilities, I would like to get some uh council direction or uh information on that. Uh, currently, we requ- if it's a, if it includes a toilet in the in the room, or some people call it powder room, it's being counted. Now, if the council so desires not to count those rooms, we can easily modify that definition to exclude them. But to only, I'm sorry. Let me turn that off. I thought I did. The um. We can definitely modify those definitions to to exclude the power, uh, the powder room style. Although, uh, we, I would like to have council's direction since up to this, up to now, we have included them. Uh, because that does uh change the effects of this kind of uh interpretation or implementation. So. And also, there was a question on bedrooms. The zoning code uh does include a definition of bedroom. A bedroom, and it's kind of generic, is a resident. Give my glasses back. Is a room in a residence marketed, designed, or likely to function as a primary sleep for primary sleeping. So that is what a bedroom is. When we, the more we, the more we start to finite the regulation, the more we're gonna capture homes that we may not intend to. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure that council's, council is ready to make um, to give direction on this. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And and Daniel, that was my thought, too. I'm concerned we're gonna capture housing in projects that we don't want to capture with this plan. And 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 my my understanding is when I, when I did my research on all this, that some of these smaller projects would basically be required to build in a way that wouldn't be financial, fina- uh financially, um, I don't know, appealing to them so that would discourage kind of the types of projects that Councilmember McCarthy has brought up as a concern. Can you talk to that? Do you know what I'm talking about with that? I think it's with the 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 parking requirement that I would trigger.
Oh, yes. The parking requirement for a high occupancy, single-family home would be one space per bedroom. And this is based on our previous conversations that to minimize the impact of on-street parking in the older and smaller neighborhoods and those neighborhoods that are not in older areas, that could also be single-family, high occupancy housing. So the thing to keep in mind is that's, that was the previous direction was to uh get those higher dwellings. I'd also like to add that a single-family, a single-family dwelling can have, by definition, any number of bedrooms as long as they disclose it as a single-family dwelling. The zoning code defines a family as a maximum of eight persons, either related or unrelated. Also, the zo- that the building code, if it's used for less than 30 days, as such as a short-term rental, it has additional requirements. So it gets caught a different way uh for those homes. But if you want to do 15 or 20 bedrooms and you're gonna tell staff that it's being used for a single-family home, there's nothing that staff can do under the building code or the zoning code to prohibit that home from being used in that manner.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I guess I, I guess I I feel comfortable with what staff has outlined. But, yeah, go ahead, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Odegaard?
Um, I didn't have anything at this moment.
Okay. I I'm sorry. I thought I saw a comment from Ian. So I just really want to ask staff just to be very clear. Um, Ms. McCarthy?
The basic issue here is do we want to protect neighborhoods from these very dense uh things, whatever we want to call them, high occupancy housing, where we have uh 10 different people living in a house and uh basically affecting the neighborhood and making it a commercial neighborhood in effect? The question is, are we gonna control this or not? And that's the basic issue.
Thank you, Ms. McCarthy. Uh, I do think that there are some nuances, though, that council would like to make sure um they are not making worse. Um, so I guess my question is to staff. This right here is going to directly regulate large-scale housing projects in less-than-appropriate areas. That's correct, right?
Correct.
There are some nuances when it comes to um houses that may want more than five sanitation, five or more sanitation facilities that are single families, but those are not necessarily going to. Are those gonna be the exception rather than the rule with this type of amendment?
That's normally a uh uh an exception from, based on my career, single-family homes with more than a one-to-one ratio, typically you're looking at a high-end market. Um, you're not looking at a, at a, an average market. So it's very possible that we're, we're capturing those homes. But it it all depends. And uh, right now, I'm a little bit out of lost hou- to address council's comments only because of the fact that I don't know what to include as a bathroom and what that count is, if if you don't mind me saying.
Yeah, and I think that council is also struggling with that, at least some members of council. Um, I think we'll move on to the next section of this, and that would give council the opportunity, those of us who are not um exactly sure how to answer your question, um, the opportunity to actually think on it for a moment. Um, Ms. Whelan?
Um, Mayor, I would not call a powder room a a bathroom. Um, so that's what I'm thinking about that.
Yeah, it seems like if it's a powder room, it would not be part of the sanitation facilities.
Agreed.
And Mayor, if I may, I, we, at the end, we can circle back to this to allow council to kind of think on this some more. And that kind of sounds like we're a handful of the comments are, but um I do like your suggestion of circling back and allowing for more time to consider this.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. So I'm gonna go on to the next part. Once we define the single-family homes, you know, uh, HOHDs where they're allowed. By including these in the 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 single-family homes and the smaller units, it takes in a lot of the zones. So that's why we were looking at the lot sizes and the density, uh, the bedrooms, because it would be allowed in in al- almost all of the residential zones and some of the commercial zones. As would the two units or duplexes, uh, they'd also be allowed in many of the zones and some more of the commercial. As would triplexes and uh three units or greater, or four units or greater, or to consider multifamily. They're all, majority of the zones do allow multifamily, so multifamily HOHDs or high occupancy housing would also be allowed. It should be noted that those high occupancy housing developments with four or more units would only be allowed in activity centers. Uh, and we'll get to activity centers a little later, but the activity centers are those areas that we want to have more intense developments. As would the mixed-use developments. The mixed-use developments are only allowed in our commercial zones and some of our transect zones. As it pertains to densities for the zones that we're gonna be discussing, the high occupancy housing plan and staff's analysis did not anticipate modifying any of the densities in the residential zone, so those will be remaining the same. But we did uh add the, and this table's a little bit complicated, but it's it's a very easy to understand once I explain it. Uh, the high occupancy housing plan basically based a bedroom-to-dwelling unit ratio of one dwelling unit for every two and a half bedrooms. So the density allowed would be based on the den- the density allowed in the zone will allow the total number of bedrooms, so you multiply it by 2.5. But the thing to keep in mind here, the point of this table is it that that provides a cap directly related to the number of dwelling units. And if you're in a regional activity center, it does not have a cap on it, but they require a conditional use permit to exceed those caps, whether you're in the activity center or not. In the commercial zone, currently, the commercial zones don't have a density limit when they're mixed-use developments. So the high occupancy housing plan talked about at that time, which was uh 30 units or 75 dwelling units per acre, but we did lower that down to any dwelling, any development greater than 29 because just the basic math, you have a gap between 29 and 30. Uh, and it caps those out, and you have to be in an activity center to exceed that density. So if you're not in an activity center and you're a commercial zone, you can still do mixed use, but you cannot do a high occupancy housing. So this forces the high occupancy housing into our activity centers. Also, is the corresponding uh bedrooms per acre that also are tied to those densities. So 29 dwelling units per acre times 2.5 is 72.5 dwelling units per acre. And you can exceed those with a conditional use permit in an activity center. So as I indicated earlier, those dwelling units with four or more are required to be in activity centers. And where are our activity centers? The regional plan identifies the location of the activity centers, and those are your circles. So anywhere there's a circle is the only place is that you can have a high occupancy housing development with more, four or more greater units. If you have one, two, or three dwelling units, you're allowed anywhere in the city. Also, as it comes to our specific to-use standards, as we start getting into a little bit more of the development standards, the uh they're currently in the commercial zones where mod- proposing to modify those to allow just a residential development that is at least 300 feet back from a commercial corridor. Most of the commercial developments that we currently see as mixed use are on commercial corridors, although that we do have several or a couple that are off commercial corridors that are proposed. And it really doesn't make sense to have a commercial and a development that's majority residential and have commercial space that may not be used. So if you're off that commercial corridor, we are proposing to allow 100% residential in a commercial zone. Also, they would have to, any mixed-use development would have to comply with the mixed-use development standards. Uh, to address the regional plans, goals and objectives, particularly to the student housing and these higher uh HOHD and uh mixed-use high occupancy housing developments, we're proposing any development that has more than 50 dwelling units per acre or more than 125 bedrooms per acre, such as the hub, the standard, or Fremont Station, to be located in a regional activity center. So what is a regional activity center? So those are red dots, are red circles on the city and the, on the city map. So basically, along Milton and that corridor, uh, Sawmill, and there's quite a few others uh throughout the city, Fourth and Seventh Avenue, uh, near the mall. Those were your only locations under this amendment that your true high-density high occupancy housing would be allowed, such as the hub, the standard and Fremont Station. They would not be allowed outside of those red circles. And that's intentional because those, those are our primary transit areas, our primary infrastructure areas, and and it's also consistent with our growth, growth areas. Additional specific uh use requirements is that if you're gonna be a mixed-use development, you have to be adjacent to a a re- a commercial corridor. In other words, you can't be just off in the middle of a neighborhood somewhere that may have commercial zoning. that may have commercial zoning, but there's no commercial activity or inappropriate, which is why we're proposing the, the mixed u- the high occupancy housing residential only if you're setback. Also, I need, need to make clear that those red circles and the different circles are activity centers delineated out of the general plan. We talked about this a little bit earlier, about the specific use standards that they have to be in the regional center. Also, these standards, it is possible that an existing development could be subdivided and therefore become by default a high occupancy housing, because at the time it was developed, it was meeting their requirements. So if they start splitting the land, they're no longer meeting their, their density requirements to be a standard apartment project. This is unlikely, but it is a situation that I've come across in my career that does occur from time to time, that a development may split off and then therefore by default creating a non-conforming high occupancy housing development. Also, we had the request to talk about this last bullet. This is an idea that we kicked out of Tempe and Tucson, mostly mainly Tempe, as they're trying to deal with the same challenge. Is what happens to these developments when the market falls apart and they can no longer lease these units? So the idea is that as part of the original development proposal, that they at least demonstrate how they can be converted from a high occupancy housing development to a standard multifamily development. And I'll get back to that in a little bit. Actually, I can address that quickly. The council had a question, one of the councilmen had a question, what is the impact on cost? I spoke to, for the developer, the architects of the major developments in the, in the area here, that have either working on high occupancy housing developments, have submitted high occupancy housing developments or have built them. And all of them have said, this is a normal practice current, in the current market conditions because of financial feasibility, the, the developers and owners want different options. And if this is done during the design development, the cost is minimal. If it's not done during the design development and later, it could be significant. And the cost of not designing for those considerations to later make these changes is substantial. Specific to uses, the HOHDs that have more than twenty dwelling units per acre, this goes to council's direction from the last meeting that we had. I, I refer to this in the report as the distribution, bedroom distribution. This is how many bedrooms do we have that should be one, uh, single family, I'm sorry, one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom, four bedrooms or more. Based on council's direction, we came up with the proposal before you that says any large development, twenty-nine dwelling units per acre or more, or seventy-two bedrooms per acre or more, shall have a minimum of twenty percent one bedroom units and a maximum of thirty bed- of bedrooms shall have dwelling units with four bedrooms or more. If the project is less than twenty-nine dwelling units per acre, we're recommending that the project utilizes the bedroom to dwelling unit ratio. And this is based on our research, it's very similar to the 2.5 dwelling this per acre in the HOH plan. It's a bedroom to dwelling unit ratio with a maximum having no more than 3.5. But this allows the developer to, of a smaller developments to distribute them based on market. And if you start getting too specific with the above request, it actually mi- it minimizes and actually prohibits standard apartments. So he had a, we had to have a, an alternative to that. Here's a good example of a development that has eight hundred bedrooms that could be mixed distributed. So an eight hundred bedroom development based on twenty percent, a hundred and seventy of the bedrooms has to be in a one bedroom dwelling unit, whereas thirty percent of the total can be used as four bedrooms or more in those dwelling units. So the next bullet below gives a, a, just a fictitious example of how they can be distributed. Now, this maximizes the single family, or minimizes at a hundred and seventy, and then maximizes the bedrooms, and the most of the units are split in between. So in this particular example, this has a bedroom to dwelling unit ratio of 2.5, I'm sorry, 2.08. Flagstaff's typical apartment market is 1.5 bedrooms per dwelling unit, whereas our high occupancy housing developments, such as the hub, are anywhere from three to 3.5. For smaller developments, we are recommending that you use a bedroom to dwelling unit ratio, but not see 3.5. So the example before you is an eighty-seven bedroom apartment complex or HOHD with twenty-five bedrooms. So this is kind of the maximum we can do. And this kind of shows how it really reigns in those smaller developments. It should be noted that the, the bedroom to dwelling unit ratio is an approximate. Where, where the bedrooms were dwelling unit ratio also limits, though, where the other dozen, is it limits your two bedroom or two dwelling unit HOHDs, MOHDs to seven bedrooms or more. I'm sorry, it limits them to seven bedrooms or less. And then your three unit HOHDs, MOHDs are commonly referred to as your triplexes, are limited to eleven bedrooms. So you can't achieve, you can't achieve more. So there is an, a suggested alternative, although we, I wanted to throw this out there to you as a consideration. Staff's proposal is to use the bedroom distribution as recommended by council at our last meeting for the larger and the bedroom to dwelling unit ratio for a small and medium because of the flexibility and it achieves the goals that were intended through this. Alternatively, you can use the distribution or the bedroom development, bedroom to dwelling unit ratio, although the bedroom to dwelling unit ratio for all types of developments does not achieve council's desire to have a minimum number of one bedroom and three bedroom, whereas the distribution, bedroom to dwelling and distribution does. On the other hand, the bedroom to distribution ratios substantially limits the smaller developments to a ratio that's not, would not even be considered high occupancy housing. So that you would never be able to achieve high occupancy housing. And I gave some examples in the report as it pertains to that. Some of the other additional regulations that were outlined in the high occupancy housing plan where the, in the historic activity centers is the building footprint. So we're minimizing or maximizing the limited size that a building footprint can be. And those are the historic centers. In the commercial zones, the commercial business zone is twenty-two thousand square feet. And in the activity centers, it also is twenty-two thousand square feet of any one building, that is. But if you're in a regional activity center, there is no maximum size. And when there are two conflicting regulations, the more restrictive would apply. So those are the circles that we were talking about earlier. And this comes straight out of the high occupancy housing plan. In addition, we put a separation between the building footprints of the greater of ten feet or one third of the height. And this is to keep the footprints from being right next to each other. If you have twenty-two thousand square feet, you can do a roll of them right next to each other, essentially being very similar to the commercial block. But you wouldn't have any space between them as a commercial block standard or the hub. So we wanted to make sure that these, there's separation between buildings. And what the separation is, is ten feet or a greater of one third of the height. Also, this would not apply to the commercial business zone for all the buildings are virtually adjac- adjacent to each other already, and this is your downtown area. Also, we, we're incorporating standards for the waste management plan, requirements for the crime-free multi-housing program. As it pertains to additional use permit criteria, there are quite a few criteria that the high occupancy housing plan talks about, but are already requirements such as traffic. Those are already requirements. So this is in addition to your conditional use permit criteria, compatibility, traffic, all kinds of those that are currently looked at. So this very first one addresses any development that's in the historic preservation area that the development must comply or receive a, a condition, a certificate of no effect or a certificate of informants, I forget the exact term right off the top of my head. Certificate of no effect or certificate of compliance. Also, we're also requiring that, that the, the property owner enter into agreement to maintain that crime-free multi-housing. And that this is, you know, we record our, our conditions, so this is made aware of to future owners. And finally, the requirement is that the development is within a quarter acre of a transit service. And if it's not within a quarter acre, it has reasonable accommodations to get to it. And those are spelled out in the order. As it pertains to single family parking requirements, we are modifying those. There was a discussion that we had back with some of the council back in, individually, back in November, about looking at the larger single family homes that are also impacting development. So for every bedroom greater than four bedrooms, you would increase your parking requirement up to a maximum of eight. Single family and two unit and three unit multifamily developments would be required one space per dwelling unit. I'm sorry, one space per bedroom. And then when each, once you get over to the four bedrooms, we maintain that high parking requirement, because usually these smaller developments are in your neighborhoods. And that was a concern that the council expressed to staff that we wanted to address, was the impacts of the parking requirements in the smaller neighborhoods. So once you're over four units, you start entering into a sliding scale. So the first seventy-five bedrooms, you're one space. And as you get more bedrooms, that sliding scale decreases. And as you get to a larger development, it kind of goes, slows down. So there is a reality based, it, built into this for larger developments based on our transportation department's findings. Of, you know, the larger developments do not require one space per bedroom. And that we, we discussed this previously, if you like, I can go over that. It's about approximately one space for every seven point seven bedrooms. Also, we're putting a requirement in as, as it pertains to the mixed use commercial components of, of one space for every three hundred square feet. We're adding a provision that says any reduction for a multifamily, excuse me, an HOHD or multiple use HOHD will require council approval. Currently, you can get a modification to your parking requirements based on just a parking plan without council approval up to a certain percentage. And that's because we tailored the parking requirements for the mixed use standards based on the traffic department division sections findings, which takes into account bike parking already, it already takes into account locations. Not everybody has a car, so we tailored those specifically. Also, at council's request, we removed the tandem parking requirement for all transect zones and commercial zones. You still would be required, allowed to use it in your residential zones. And this is to maintain consistency with our, our single family homes or duplexes that only have a single driveway and similar. As it pertains to our bike parking spaces, we are maintaining that there is a minimum number of five percent of the total bedrooms, whichever greater, currently that standard is based on the dwelling units. So for example, I believe the standard off the top of my head is two hundred and thirty bedrooms, five hundred, close to five hundred and ninety-some bedrooms. It's only required five percent of the bike parking based on the dwelling units. So that would change this requirement to be based on the number of bedrooms based on the five hundred, so there's a significant increase. Also, in accordance with the high occupancy housing plan, we're including requirements for secured bike parking. Secured bike parking is fifteen percent of the bedroom, so this is in, in addition to the standard. Also, if there's any mixed use developments, they, in addition, have to provide an additional five percent for the non-residential parking, parking spaces. So it splits them out separately. So you have a standard bike rung that we see like the hoops. And then you have a secured bike parking space, and I'll kind of hit on those in a few minutes. And you have a commercial requirement. We did go through these with the bike committee in January, they had no, no additional modifications. As it pertains to the bike parking facilities, these are currently policies that we have, the, so we're proposing to incorporate these into the code. Also, these went through the bike parking committee. So we're adding the standard, what are the requirements, spacing, separation, minimizing blockage. And these are also based on national standards. But also, we're including the hot, what the requirements would be for secured bike parking, which is, includes lighting requirements, locational requirements. You only allowed so many outside of the building, the rest have to be inside the building. These are for four units and greater. So there's definitely space requirements, because what we, what we were seeing is they're jamming them in there. It's usable, but i- if you would look at some of those that went on the, the hub and the standard, if the, if you were able to look at the bike parking facilities, they were very overwhelming and very difficult, so several of them. But we did allow in the standards for alternatives to be approved, there are bike rec facilities that allow for stacking, which are very functional. We did see those both at the standard and at the, the hub hanging on the wall. So we did allow for standards to be approved by the director. So these are not hard and fast, these are the minimum standards. Whereas they want to go to a greater level, those would be allowed. One of the best things that we were, not one of the best things, many good things about this program to implement your direction is the transit pass requirement. Back in October, there was a desire to look at the possibility to reduce parking based on providing transit passes. Now, this is a pilot program, and this is intentional to be a pilot program with a five-year term out or to be extended by council. And we can get into the reasoning of that, but essentially, if we pass the code and then try to take away, take away that code that we find is not working, we have other issues about taking away a right that we have granted. So this is by putting it in a five-year program with the council to option to extend it, gets us kind of out of that loop. But it allows for a twenty percent reduction in the required parking spaces. Now, these do not require to go to council. And it's limited only to high occupancy housing developments that have a hundred spaces or more. So, and that is intentional. And so that's to, again, it, get through these larger developments that have the economies, not necessarily economies as a scale, but the reality of the implementation of these developments and that ratio based on traffics. of the implementation of these developments and that ratio based on traffic's findings allows for that parking reduction and not to impact their smaller developments that could have a larger impact on the available parking in neighborhoods. Also, that the parking re- reduction does not reduce it below 6.5. And that was based on my conversations with traffic and where we start getting into issues. Furthermore, it doesn't require an agreement. And what this agreement will talk about is the purchasing of those passes, the reporting of those passes being used. And also, if they want to get out of the agreement. Because this requirement would be perpetual. And the only way to get out of the agreement is to provide the parking on-site. So it doesn't allow somebody to come in and do it for a couple of years and no longer have to provide it. It, this is a perpetual requirement. So that's a kind of high-level overview of the entire amendment. I know it's a lot of information. I'll be happy to go back to any slide you would like. And I'm open for comments and questions.
I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan because she indicated that she had a question about parking. Then we have a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as we go through this, I think we also are wrestling with our decision to call a climate action crisis. And so when I see that we're adding on parking for convenience, that kind of is a rub against what we have been doing around our climate action and adaptation plan. So I, I just wanted to throw that out. I have no answers. But it certainly is a consideration when we're looking at at these things, our, our decisions supporting our climate action crisis and our, our climate adaptation plan? Or are decisions? Are we wavering? So I'd love to hear council's thoughts as we move along tonight. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Daniel.
Yes, Mayor. If I can just respond to that quickly, if you may. And Sarah would like to respond also. We are, the current, the proposed parking requirements are significantly less than the current requirements for a high, for a rooming and boarding facility. They are, which is one space for every bedroom. And we're maxing out on a large development at a box approximately 0.78. So we're, we are doing it. And then we're providing additional alternatives to reduce that further down to a ratio that we see with some of the other developments that are being provided. So we are very cognizant of the climate action plan. We did review these with our, with our sustainability staff. Of course, we would want to reduce them further, although the, this plan allows for us to add in additional options in the future. These are the ones that we know work right now. And that, that's how we're addressing that. And I think Sarah would like to add a comment about this also, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. And before you do, can I just ask? And these are all within those activity centers. So we're talking transit availability, walkability, bike ability. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that is. And that's the main reason why the ratios are much, you know, they're 30% or 25, 22 to all the way down to a potential 35% reduction in the, in the current requirements for a rooming and boarding facility. So.
Thank you.
May I jump in, Mayor Evans? Mayor Evans, thank you. This is Sarah Decter, Conference of Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff. And I see I also prompted Nicole Antonopoulos to jump in after me. One of the pieces of the regional plan that I think is sometimes getting overgeneralized in the climate change discussion is the concept of infill and increased densities. It is not simply the, to meet these climate goals and to meet the growth goals that we've modeled in our regional plan, it's not simply creating more density wherever it's available. It's about creating walkable places with mixed use that do two things functionally. First, they reduce the number of daily trips that need to be made by vehicle. And except for transit, of course. And then two, they are lowering the number of vehicle miles traveled because there's not one or two central commercial locations, but several throughout the city. And so maybe you don't always have to drive to Milton to get some of your day-to-day needs met, or always drive downtown from wherever you live in the city. So those two things are why we have activity centers in as many locations as we have and why we are particularly with this zoning code amendment, trying to drive density to the activity centers. It assists us in that place making and also is a key to walkability because it makes more eyes on the streets and hopefully the built environment and the street improvements around new buildings will bring the walk, walking environment up and up to a standard that encourages walking and bicycling and other kinds of travel. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there because that was part of our high occupancy housing plan. I know that Jenny Niemann from our sustainability staff was working on climate change action right after we were doing high occupancy housing. But she was, she was very much in the conversations on high occupancy housing. And this was a precursor, but it was included in all of those discussions. And so I would, I would be glad to let Nicole jump in if she has something to add because this is an important topic for her staff as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nicole Antonopoulos, Sustainability Director. And, and thank you, Sarah, so much. Yes, if I may just build off of some of the foundational points that Sarah made. The reducing the daily trips needed by vehicles and reducing VMT is going to be critical in addressing our climate emergency and focusing on carbon neutrality by 2030. This discussion today and, and from my professional perspective is a start. Right now, sustainability staff, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan Steering Committee, community members are working to develop what carbon neutrality is going to require. And we have our preliminary wedge analysis. And we know that obviously, energy and transportation are the areas that are going to have to really be addressed. We will be back in front of city council on October 27th with those larger overarching goals. And then again, back in front of council with supporting strategies and actions for consideration regarding carbon neutrality. So more to come from, from us, but this is absolutely a start in the right direction. But we will have more in-depth conversations about how aggressive of action we need to be focusing on. Thank you.
Excellent. I thank you both for clarity.
I'd like to go to the public comment cards that we have. Then I'll come back to the vice mayor. And I actually have a comment about this topic. Parking. City Clerk?
David Carpenter, you could please start?
Yeah, I'm here.
Terrific. You're ready to start.
Start, okay. You can hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Oh, good. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to give comments. This is David Carpenter, 1109 Westfield Road. Well, I'll be pretty brief. I just want to advise you to really think on this some more. It's the first time we've seen actual code.
Mayor, I'm sorry. For some reason, he just dropped.
I'm going to go ahead and go to the vice mayor. And when he calls back, we will put him back on.
So sorry, I was cut off. This is COVID-19 challenges.
Yes, David, could you hold on for just a moment? We're taking a comment from a council member.
Okay.
Actually, the vice mayor hasn't started. So I think we can go back to David Carpenter.
Terrific, David. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I was cut off. Apologize. COVID-19 challenges for all of us. Appreciate the time. I just really want to stress that we take the time. It's the first time we're changing the code and not just the, the guiding principle document. These, these, these proposed changes are extremely complicated. And I think you probably can all realize that by reading them, just scrolling through the agenda. One of the reasons I think we should not do this is just how unbelievably complicated you're making this. Not you, I'm sorry. That would make, that would become. Any kind of large national developer that's going to build something enormous can just afford to do this. Like Dan Seimer said, it actually doesn't cost that much to figure out these calculations. But it's the small parcels, the infill parcels, the people that want to achieve, they will sell their properties at some point on the south side, sunny side, et cetera, be able to redevelop. They're the ones that have been caught up in this and, and basically never really be able to redevelop. I'd also like to encourage, encourage you to tell staff to go back to the drawing board and make it less complicated, number one. Number two, try to go back to the drawing board and actually address the problem that this all began with. The, the big giant buildings are the ones that people aspire with. Yet somehow in this current proposal, you're, you're, you're going all the way down to single-family home and kind of putting your arms around everyone. And then, yeah, like I said before, larger developers, like some of these examples, you just look at Dan's examples, 800 bedrooms, 650 bedrooms. Those people have no problem adding 50 parking spaces to a six-story parking garage. It's the six units and the 12 units and the three units. Those are the ones that just can't do it. It just physically becomes impossible to be able to develop your.
Hello? I feel like we lost Mr. Carpenter again.
Oh, no, I just finished up. That's all, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Council, are there any questions for Mr. Carpenter? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and hi, David. Thank you for joining us and thanks for your comments. So, you know, what council members, what council members comments were earlier in regards to the loophole potentially of like a, a smaller project being built to a higher capacity. I'm just curious for your, your thoughts on that. Because I agree with you. I personally like that we're addressing the larger, the larger issues, the larger developments. But how do we also ensure that these, these smaller developments aren't in our communities?
Yeah, I think you're on the right track. Staff has, staff has been adjusting these metrics. But just think about it as a death of a thousand cuts. So one would be this bedroom, bathroom ratio thing, of course. I think you're on the right track with like the eight bedrooms. I heard Mr. McCarthy, and that sounds reasonable. I mean, more than that, that's, that's pretty unreasonable. But then you start to get to where that, you wouldn't even be triggered by that because you're going to be triggered by cars. And if you have a little lot somewhere, there's no way you're going to park eight cars. So it doesn't even matter you're allowing eight bedrooms because you can only really probably park five cars. So think of it as the death of a thousand cuts. The all, all the other really interesting stuff that they're adding to the code that probably is really necessary for an enormous building to function even better. And those people probably want those things in there, bike, indoor bike storage, things of that nature. That's just kind of really hard to do in a really small development. So I would just encourage you to keep looking at it as the death of a thousand cuts and restrict a little bit more on those lower units because it's just, it's going to come down to parking, really.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Correct me if I'm wrong, but is this about what the, also what the residents wanted in having, doesn't these, don't these amendments coincide with resident feedback and communication? Maybe, Sarah, you can help me with that word applies.
Councilmember Whelan, through some of our planning efforts, we have heard about sort of 10 bed, eight-bedroom, single-family homes and some larger duplexes and triplexes that are of concern. The direction, I don't think those were comments that we have heard in the high occupancy housing zoning code updates. And when we were doing the, the high occupancy housing specific plan, we had really said we weren't going to talk about developments that were less than four units. The direction to include those smaller units came from last year's city council work session. And so that, I think maybe that came from some comments council members had heard. But I don't think that particularly was something that directly came to myself or, or Dan Seimer. That's my memory. But if someone remembers something different, please chime in. Thank you.
Thank you. I could probably add to that, you know. And I don't necessarily have a question for Mr. Carpenter, but I, I guess I do have a comment. It's not only the larger, the larger units, things like the hub and the standards that are problematic for small historic neighborhoods, right? It's also these triplexes that have 12 different beds that are all keyed individually because of the way they're being used. You know, one of the things I was pretty clear about was tandem parking does not work, right? It looks great on the books. People do it for the first week they move in, but after that, they don't tandem park. And it seems like most of these smaller units in the neighborhoods, as Mr. Carpenter pointed out, it comes down to parking because there's more people than there are parking spaces in these units. And their cars are all over the neighborhood and cause a lot of issues. So I, I wouldn't say that it's only the big units that are causing problems. I just got to put it out there that these smaller triplexes and things like that, especially when you're retrofitting them into an historic neighborhood, truly cause a lot of issues. I see our zoning code administrator has a comment. Then I see Mr. McCarthy. I don't believe there's any more comments from Mr. Carpenter. Zoning code?
Allow me to.
Oh, okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Just based on your last comment, just from having so much that I've done on the south side, I would say that if, now that we have a parking plan, if you would go in with a bond measure or some other kind of capital and build all of the missing sidewalks and curbs and driveway entrances and alleys and paint them red and put up the signs where they're supposed to go, you would not have any parking problems. It's a, it's just kind of like a no man's land of the way the streets work down there. So that's my follow-up for you. Thank you.
Okay, Daniel? Hello?
Mayor, okay. Sorry, I got muted for a second. I do like to add that to Sarah's comments that the, we did hear from a couple neighbors in the, in the outreach about the smaller single-family homes that are in the Plaza Vieja neighborhood that were issues. I did mention that back in October when we were talking about whether or not to include them because they were being concerned that some of these homes that were coming in was a six bedrooms and six baths. And in fact, there's one that was been, I believe it's been recently completed or just about completed at 13 feet wide with two parking spaces. We did hear about that. A couple of those projects in the Plaza Vieja. There was one in, in the south side meeting last August. There was a comment about that. Also, just one in the south side area. So we did hear from those particular two areas that there are concerns about the single-family, but the, the direction was to include those at that time. And the, the comp, to address all of the smaller units is the reason why it starts getting complicated. The code gets complicated. It's, it's fairly easy once you start using it, but it, it's on the surface, it does appear complicated. Thank you.
Go to Mr. McCarthy first and back to Ms., I guess we have another public comment. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have two comments. One is that when I hear people complain about parking, it's usually not at the hub or the standard. What they're complaining about is in the neighborhoods. when I hear people complain about parking, it's usually not at the hub or the standard. What they're complaining about is in the neighborhoods. So that's a real concern of these infill projects that are being in a residential area that are really not compatible with the neighborhoods. My second thought is kind of a follow-up to Ms. Whelan's comment. And I've been thinking about the bedroom thing, I mean, the bathroom thing. And I'm thinking that maybe what we should do is only include three-quarter and full baths. In other words, if it's a toilet and a sink to wash your hands, maybe we wouldn't count that. But if it has a shower or a bathtub, then we would count it. And then if we did that, I guess under my suggestion, we would say anything with seven bedrooms or more or four full baths or three-quarter baths or more would be considered high occupancy housing. That way, if each bedroom had its own toilet, that wouldn't count against it. But if it had a shower or a bathtub, then it would be considered, you know, sanitation unit. Thank you.
Can we go to the public comment?
Please.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, I'm here.
You can go ahead.
Yes. Deborah Harris, South Side Community Association. Good evening, everyone. I hope you all can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I would like to make a comment on the high occupancy housing. And I just want to let the council and mayor and staff know that the people in South Side, the residents, are concerned about the triplexes. We're not as concerned about the standard and the hub because we don't think that you'll be able to build any more of those types in the South Side, probably because there's not enough vacant land. But the bottom line is that that zoning code that we have is really pretty crazy and it's very complicated. I've been listening for the last hour and a half or two hours. I consider myself a fairly educated woman. And it's difficult for me to follow. And so it's going to be more difficult for the community at large to follow. I think that we do ourselves a disservice when we do make these codes so difficult for people to understand. And then we allow people who do have an understanding of those codes to serve on commissions that can make decisions about the code and negatively affect those that live in the community, and they don't. So that's just my little soapbox. The next thing that I want to say is that I think we need to think very carefully about any amendments that we make to the code. We need to also think about the smaller neighborhoods and keeping that historic nature. Some people don't want to see the historic nature kept, but a lot of people do. And so I think we owe it to those communities and to those neighborhoods to protect them because years ago, they weren't being protected when we developed these codes. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Ms. Harris? Vice Mayor?
I apologize. My question wasn't for Ms. Harris.
Okay. So not seeing any. Vice Mayor, can you go ahead? And then I have a comment.
Okay, thank you. Dan, it almost seems like there's two different battlefronts that I'm viewing in terms of the community's struggle with the developers. The developments are coming forward. One is with the larger units, the larger developers and developments, such as all the ones that we've been referencing, and then the smaller projects. I'm just wondering if there's any way to draw a line between the two and kind of have a separate set of requirements or yeah, requirements for each of those two categories. Dan, are you with us?
Yes, the, obviously I'd have to go back and look at it. You know, we were working, we were working on different ways of looking at it, trying to keep the the 29 dwelling units and larger, which is the original intent of the high occupancy housing plan and filing up with the smaller units in October and then based on our discussion in July. You know, it's really going to come down to is what do we want to consider high occupancy housing? And I think that's where we're all struggling is, is do we want to address the single-family homes? Do we want to address the duplexes and the triplexes? Do we want to address only the original intent of the high occupancy housing plan? So if there's, the code can be easily bifurcated and only address the greater than 29 dwelling units and over, in accordance with the high occupancy housing plan, yes, that could be easily done. The challenge, though, is what we've been discussing for the last couple of work sessions that we have is what do we want to consider? And this is high occupancy housing because we have amended those definitions based on our discussions. So as this code comes forward, I think that's where we're really starting to struggle is this is, it's becoming a reality and I don't know where to bifurcate that to address both the small and the large, other than the way it was originally intended in the high occupancy housing plan.
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, at one point in the presentation, there's talk about a minimum. I'm looking for it right now in the slides where you speak about like a trigger point. I want to say it's, oh, here it is, 50 dwelling units per acre or 125 bedrooms per acre. Like, I wonder if that can be like a dividing point.
That would be inconsistent with your high occupancy housing plan that was adopted, which has it at 30, 29 to 30 dwelling units per acre and 72.5.
Okay, good point. Okay, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
So I wanted to go.
Sorry, Vice Mayor, if I could clarify that 50 dwelling units per acre is meant to be kind of the extra-large high occupancy housing. It does come from the plan, but it only is intended to say what the threshold is for a regional activity center versus other areas.
And that is correct. I apologize for that. That is correct. Those are small, medium. Medium is 29 and over, and the large is the 15 over. Yes, Sarah is correct.
Okay, so I want to go back to the parking, the parking comment and just follow up really on what Ms. Whelan said as well as Ms. Decter and Ms. Antonopoulos, because I think this is extremely important. And I think what Ms. Decter said, council really needs to stop and maybe we need to come back and just have a further vetting of that. Because taking away our reduction in parking does not directly correlate with minimizing carbon outputs. What it does do, it does negatively impact the quality of life in neighborhoods. I think that we can restrict parking and we can talk about a climate emergency and a climate action and adaptation plan. But the fact of the matter is, is that when you look at what's being built, it's not being built in a way that people can actually walk to it. And yes, it's great that the bus line is there, but not a whole lot of people necessarily want to bring their groceries back on a bus. And so when you look at how we're building things, first and foremost, there's no grocery stores in any of these places. Right? So people are having to leave and get their groceries. A lot of these higher-density units, we had a conversation last week about zero commercial in the bottom. There's no commercial in the bottom of these things. So people are still having to leave. And so the cars are still necessary and the cars are still going to be there. You know, in the South Side neighborhood, we have one of the oldest supposedly continuously operated grocery stores that's on my street. It has a lot of alcohol, but you couldn't go in there and buy actual groceries in that market. So I think that if we really want, if we're very serious about addressing the climate emergency and about minimizing carbon output and those types of things, then we need to address what it is that people will walk to the grocery store and get. And so when you look around at all of this, there are very few traditional neighborhoods in this city. South Side is one, and Sunny Side is one to a certain extent. But there really aren't things that you could walk to. You can't necessarily walk to the grocery store. You can't walk to get your prescription, things like that. So I really think that, you know, as council moves forward and has these type of conversations, putting up bicycle racks, mandating bus passes and reduction in parking isn't going to address what it is that council says they're trying to address. But what it will do, what will cause a lot of frustration and angst and unlimited or a lower quality of life in the neighborhoods that are impacted by the reduction in parking, because again, all these people still have cars and they're all using their cars because they have to leave the neighborhood to go get what it is that they want. I believe, Mr. Aslan, you have a question?
Hi, Mayor. Yeah, we're bouncing around here a little bit, but that's fine. I'm curious, first of all, I wanted to say that specifically what Councilmember McCarthy was saying in terms of narrowing the definition of bathroom or a three-quarter bath, I like that idea. But also, if we were to go with the definition of seven or eight bedrooms, I think that would make sense. That passed the smell test for me. And I'm just wondering, Mayor Evans, just, this is a question for you specifically because I hear your concerns about what would some of these changes mean for families that are, that really are single family residential units but have a sort of non-traditional aspect to them where there's lots of bedrooms or there's lots of things that would be considered sanitation rooms. If we were to grandfather existing units or dwellings like that in and exempt them from these changes, would that help the situation?
So I guess I have a question back, and I think mine might end up being a legal question. You know, council got an email from someone who lives in University Heights, who is very concerned because I believe it is President Walkups. His house or his lot is up for sale right now, right? And it's a large lot in University Heights. And they are very concerned because you could conceivably go in and build like a party house there with a lot of different bathrooms and then have it short-term rented out all week long. In the same respect, we also have another individual who lives in the exact same neighborhood that has a house, it's a five-bedroom house, that has currently five bathrooms and a powder room. And just that person's family lives there. And so their question is, if this moves forward, is their property now devalued? Or if they go to sell their property, do the people who are going to buy their property, do they now need to get a conditional use permit? What does it mean for people who currently have houses that fit this definition? And I think if we could get legal interpretation as to what that means, I don't think grandfathering is a legal term. But maybe if the house is already built and the house is already functioning as a single, as a single resident, single-family household, right? Maybe then those guys don't have to worry about it. But the issue is this person is like, what if I go to sell my home? What does that mean?
Mayor, I have another question, too. Just wondering if, you know, sustainability is going to be giving us an update on the discussion around carbon neutrality at the end of October, I think. I'm just wondering if this should wait until after that. I think it's 27th of October.
I see that we have an attorney. Christina Rubacava?
Yeah, hi, Mayor and Council. This is Christina Rubacava, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I'm going to the question that you posed, and Dan and Tiffany, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if there's an existing home that would meet our definition for high occupancy housing, that home would be considered a legal non-conforming use and would be allowed to be, to continue that way until, I believe it's either they try to change the use or make a certain amount of renovations. But Tiffany, perhaps you want to jump in if you see that differently?
Christina, that is correct.
So they could sell it as is and would not have to go and get a conditional use permit or something like that?
No. It would be considered legal non-conforming and they're allowed to maintain the non-conformity until such time they change the use or make significant modifications.
Yes, you just, hi, this is Tiffany. You can't expand the non-conformity. That's what would trigger a conditional use permit. So if you are a five-bedroom, five-bathroom house and that's what was deemed to be a high occupancy housing, then if you were to add a six-bedroom or six-bathroom and that would kick you into that definition, then you would need to get a conditional use permit to do that expansion. Just as a note, just so you know what the cost of a conditional use permit, the fee for that is $3,000.
Thank you. Mr. Aslan, did you have a follow-up?
Well, I was changing subjects a little bit, and I see that Nicole might have an answer to my question, at least in terms of what's available. But my question is for council, really. What should we, is this something that we should wait until after October 27th to further discuss because of the recommendations coming in from sustainability about carbon neutrality? Just a thought. If we're going to continue this conversation at some point, it might be who of us to have that conversation first.
Counsel, I would ask you to weigh in on that. I would say that I'm fine with moving the conversation forward tonight. However, if the majority of council wants to wait, that's fine. I think the issue, or not necessarily issue, the conversation that we should be having with regards to the carbon neutrality and the climate emergency and our path forward, to me, needs to be more comprehensive than it has been. And I think that we are doing things on the surface in order to address it, but we're not getting to the heart of what the issue is and why, and we're not necessarily changing people's behavior. And I think that's the main conversation we should be having. I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy and then to the Vice Mayor.
I'm open-minded, but I haven't seen any reason why we should not move forward with this.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Aslan, I appreciate you bringing that up. And I think that is an interesting point that you mentioned. I'd be curious what Nicole would have to say on this topic. But before I turn it over to her, I do feel comfortable with us moving forward on this tonight and continuing to move forward with this topic. But I would be curious as to what Nicole would have, what her thoughts are. Nicole, are you with us?
I sure am. I just was waiting to be called on. Yes, Mayor and Council, Nicole Antonopoulos. In an effort to set everyone up for as much success as possible and do the community justice in terms of the climate emergency and carbon neutrality discussion, my hope is that we can ensure those considerations are taken, are weighed into all decision-making as we move forward. And we, and going back to Sarah's point about activity centers and reducing vehicle miles traveled being at the forefront and infrastructure development for pedestrians and bicycles that are safe and convenient and so forth. So in my mind, it would be beneficial to ensure that there's a clear understanding for council in terms of what the wedge analysis is of how we're going to achieve carbon neutrality. Again, because our largest emitters are in the transportation and the energy sectors, there's going to be a lot of focus in that area. Does that mean we're ready to revamp the, all the work that we're talking about today and have it refined enough that it can be brought back to council in a few months? Absolutely not. So as long as it's, there's an understanding that this will be a progression of advancement and achieving the goals to get us, taking those steps to get us towards carbon neutrality. Again, I just want to be very upfront with council, similar to the conversation we had when the climate emergency was brought forward. we had when the climate emergency was brought forward, that the development sector, community development, will be um an area that is identified as immediate strategies will need to be taken as we look at that, the built environment growing over the next ten years.
Thank you, Nicole. And I, so I think, you know, what I take away from what you just shared and just to mention, to share with council, I think we should move forward with this tonight and then, and just know that future adjustments uh will likely be needed. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, our zoning code administrator has a comment?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, one of the things that we are not prepared to come forward today, but we are working on, uh, related to the high occupancy housing, and that's because there's a strong desire to do additional public outreach, is, and um, is looking at energy efficiency for these types of developments and putting additional requirements in. So as the projects move forward, as the developments move forward, Sarah's, and um, Nicole is absolutely right, the, the intent of these things is to be, for these projects to be in our activity centers. And that's what this amendment does do, with the exception of the single-family and the small duplex and triplex. So the large ones would be in the activity centers where it's most appropriate to achieve these goals. And then as we're planning, we are planning to come back to the council and with a future opportunity, although we don't have enough public outreach to really talk about what that is as it pertains to uh increasing energy efficiency. But those are building code modifications, those are not zoning code modifications. So as a locational point of view, and Sarah and Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, the activity center is the intent, and that's what the, what the zoning code would require, uh, and minimizing the additional infrastructure into areas uh that are, cannot support it. Um, the other, the other thing is too, is if we can always come back and reduce parking requirements or provide additional uh programs, and those, as those are developed, you know, those will come out. And we're currently uh looking at, we just, just started our, our TDM, Transit Demand Council, looking at that uh from a holistic point of view, and believe me, it's in the baby steps. I mean, we have several programs in place already, but it's looking at holistically, and that's, uh, Nicole's group is gonna be uh handling a lot of that. Uh, as those realistic plans come online, you know, those can be added to further reduce the parking. And um, that's one of the items I've been stressing as we go forward with transit, uh, parking reductions, is it's gotta be flagstaffed reality. Is it gonna work? Just because it works in San Francisco or it works in New York, it may not work here. And having done several transit uh oriented projects and reductions, um, that aren't based on a locality's realistic opportunities that, you know, help change that character, they're not very successful. Uh, you actually still have the same issue. So uh, moving forward is definitely an option for the council, but keep in mind that, you know, the parking, we are reducing the parking by overall for large developments significantly. And um, the locational requirements, uh, again, Sarah and Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, are consistent with where we would want these type of developments. And the opportunity uh really is really in, in the building, the, how you construct the building itself, and whether or not you can do additional uh reductions in parking. Because that was one of the hot topics we talked about last year was, um, there was, the council had opinions that we should maintain the one-to-one, and then some said we, uh, believe that we can go down as low as a half a space. So uh, we came up with alternatives to allow that to be uh, um, realistic. And that's, I think, is a good, uh, good thing to consider when you decide whether or not to move forward, because we always can add uh programs to further reduce parking, because I think from a climate action perspective, and I'm not an expert in this area, um, you want to make sure that you're doing it holistically for a parking reduction and, and getting the best bang for your buck and make sure it works for our flagstaff region. So I mean, really, that's the comments, and Sarah and Nicole, please feel free to uh make comments.
I see that our city manager would like to weigh in, Mr. Clifton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, in staff, in council. I just want to enable council to, to um, keep the conversation focused on the agenda item at hand, and I don't want to undermine all the very nice dialogue that's occurring at the staff level, but we at the staff level need to enable council to get to the topic at hand, please, thank you.
So with that, I'm gonna go back, I believe that Mr. McCarthy had a suggestion in um some changes to perhaps the bedroom count and bathroom count. Um, and then I'm gonna start going around with council, um, just asking you to weigh in so we can give direction on it. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. So my latest suggestion is really a suggestion of Ms. Whalen, uh, Ms. Whalen, and that we not count a, a room that just has a toilet and a sink to wash your hands in as a sanitation unit, but that we would count three-quarter baths, which means it has a shower, or full baths, which means it has a bathtub, and that we define high occupancy housing as anything that has seven or more bedrooms, and that number is subject to debate, of course, and that anything that has four or more full baths or three-quarter baths would be considered high occupancy housing. Now, again, that doesn't mean that it wouldn't be allowed, it just means that there'd be a few more hoops to go through, uh, to get it approved. My major concern is that uh, things that people build and say are residential could easily be reconfigured or, you know, reused without even reconfiguring it, just reused, and in effect, it'd be a small um student housing project or a high-density housing project. So that's my proposal. Thank you.
Ms. Whalen?
Oh, Mayor, um, I would agree with Councilmember McCarthy. The only um concern would be the bathroom count, um, and I would lean more to a higher bathroom count. Thank you.
Ms. Solis?
Um, uh, thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor. Uh, I agree with Councilmember Whalen about the bathroom count and agree with Councilmember McCarthy about um specifically defining sanitation unit that includes a shower or taking a bath facility, so a sink and a potty will not count as a sanitation facility, because I would like um to hear from the community. So more stakeholders, um, neighborhood, uh, citizen input will be very much appreciated moving forward, and I appreciate staff hard work on this, especially um staff clarifying that um existing residential, um, um, re- residential, existing uh single-family detached units will have, you know, more than five bathrooms, more than five bedrooms, will be classified as leg- legal non-compliance, and they won't be required to uh get a S U P, but they won't be able to uh expand the legal non-compliance uh definition either. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So, well, thank you, Mayor. Um, so Councilmember McCarthy, uh, from one of, understanding from your comments, you're basically lowering the bar, or, or you could say raising the bar, but you're basically lowering the, the trigger point, correct? Am I, am I correcting that understanding? Like, you said like a... Yeah, please.
So, uh, if, in the redefinition of the bathroom, um, we're basically making it so more, more configurations would not be considered H O H. Uh, and in my proposal, I changed the number one. Uh, I would say, based on what uh Ms. Whalen and Ms. Solis said, maybe we could uh leave that at five or more bathrooms or, you know, and with the new definition, or seven or more bedrooms.
Okay, and then, and so you're saying, take away the, the, the different categories of single-family, you know, duplexes, triplexes?
Actually, this definition that I focus specifically on, um, single-family homes, um, when I, when I studied the packet, I didn't really see a problem with the definitions for duplexes and triplexes. But I'll also say that I think you and I and all of us should go back and review those again in light of the conversation we've had tonight. I mean, the good thing about this whole thing tonight is it's only a conversation, we don't have to make the final decision tonight.
Sure. Okay, so in understanding that, you're talking specifically to single-family um definitions. I, I'm fine with that, I'm okay with the, the bathroom definition, um, and, and I also am good with staff's recommendations otherwise.
By bathroom definition, I presume you mean to only counting three-quarter and full baths as baths?
Right.
Right, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna go to Ms. Ant- or, sorry, Vice Mayor.
You know, I was just curious to kick that over to Dan really quick, just to have him just really quickly talk about what the pros and cons are of that, or what your thoughts are on what Councilmember McCarthy is recommending in regards to the bathroom and Councilmember Whalen.
And I believe Ms. Antal also wants to weigh in on that?
Just, just really quick, this is Tiffany Antal, um, and, and maybe this is a, an introduction to Dan to cover this, but um, I know that Councilmember McCarthy is being very specific in terms of the single-family definition, but it's important to also look at where we are in terms of the duplex and triplex as well, um, because the, the triplex definition would not, you wouldn't, the way it is now, you wouldn't actually really be able to go above seven bedrooms, but you would on a single-family dwelling. So just, you know, in, in light of trying to true those together, is there a reason to allow more bedrooms in a single-family unit than there isn't a duplex? And yes, um, I was hoping that Dan could cover this topic as well.
Thank you, Tiffany. Um, it's kind of starting off with the definition of moving to three-quarter bath, uh, three-quarter bath, full bath, and whether it's seven bedrooms or more. Um, I have no issue with that, I think that's fine, and it is a very simple change, uh, as it pertains to the code. Uh, and as it pertains to the duplexes and triplexes, it's a very good consideration. Uh, in my experience in reviewing and analyzing this entire subject, is they are not the same animal. Um, if you would apply to seven bedrooms and four baths to a triplex, you're looking at a triplex with over twenty-one bedrooms, uh, or a duplex with over twenty-one bedrooms. And I have been trying to look at this from a holistic point of view of going, okay, a duplex is allowed in a single-family residential neighborhood. That's all single-family homes, or may have a couple duplexes in there. And the lot sizes is essentially the same, could be a little larger, not usually, it, I mean, you look at your minimum lot sizes. And if you look at a single-family home with eight bedrooms and a duplex having two units, now you're allowing sixteen bedrooms per total before you would require a high occupancy housing uh conditional use permit. And I think that would raise concerns with, with we hear on the South Side in the Plaza Vieja neighborhoods. Um, so, which is intentional to, to those numbers to look at, how can we do that? If we were to uniformly kind of apply it, I would say, okay, uh, let's look at the duplexes and just, right now it's capped at six, let's cap it at seven, just to be consistent. Uh, for the triplexes, maybe move up to fourteen. Um, because we did, we did hear a lot of comments about the tr- uh, the twelve-bedroom duplex in the South Side and the fifteen-bedroom, I think it's fifteen-bedroom triplex in the South Side, uh, being considered high occupancy housing. There are not the same uh impacts because of the units and the amount of people that are living in those units and the size of the homes and, and the scale. So they cannot, uh, I would not recommend looking at them uniformly because of those related impacts. Um, I don't see a big deal with moving the duplexes up to, um, you know, a four and a three or even an eight, or four and a four. I'm a little concerned about that, but um, that's just because you, when you start looking at the lot sizes and the impacts uh associated, uh, you double your impacts or you triple your impacts based on that you're dwelling unit type. Um, I think they can be slightly modified to be similar, uh, as it pertains to the, the uh, single-family bedrooms, I would like to, or the, sorry, the bathrooms, it does, I'm, I am comfortable with the going with the three-quarter bath and all that, because it does limit that, um, allows more flexibility. Uh, uh, and that's what the intent of these discussions are, is to, you know, I come in at a, at a strict level and we loosen it up. Uh, we always can loosen it up, it's harder to tighten things down, um, when you're going out to the community. So the, um, the seven bedrooms, I think is fine, because the reali- it, the reality is, is uh, with that bedroom ratio or bathroom ratio, I think I, I'm comfortable with that based on my findings, and I would kind of reach out to Sarah and see what, uh, she kind of says about that also. And I don't know if she's...
Hi, sorry, Mayor, thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I, I'm trying to pull on my hat as a person who is kind of in the driver's seat for the project for the high occupancy housing plan. Um, and I think that the overall question is a good one, because I'm, I do struggle with the single-family and duplexes. Um, you know, there, I think this is not a policy question that will have a numerical answer, um, that's easy, uh, mainly because we didn't do as in, we did in-depth analysis for it as part of the zoning code update. I think Dan maybe has some pretty complicated, um, spreadsheets, and...
I'm, I'm sorry, Sarah, whoever's doing whatever, if you could mute yourself? Thank you. Ms. Decton?
I'm sorry, thank you for pausing me. Um, I, so, sorry, I was losing my train of thought. Um, Dan has some pretty complicated spreadsheets. We really, you know, it's hard to get data on these little units, and we know they're out there, we know where some of them are, we can observe some impacts from them, but it's very hard to get data on this particular item citywide, and so I don't know that we could accumulate enough information to kind of help you figure out where the threshold is. I just think that that's beyond, um, what we could know at this point, and so I think it will come down to a judgment on the part of council, um, how they would like to make this tipping point, um, for these smaller units work. Um, maybe Dan has something else to add to that, but that's, that's my thinking from the seat of why we sort of didn't include them in the high occupancy housing plan originally. They really are a challenge to tackle, and it's a very data-poor area, um, in terms of being able to analyze and give you some of the answers that I hear you asking for, and they're great questions. It's just not easy to give you an objective response.
Great, thank you, Sarah. And, and I'll just say, Mayor, in closing, um, I don't necessarily think we need to go back out to the public, I think we've done a decent amount of public outreach on this topic. Um, from my underst- From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we just need to figure it out, as Sarah was saying. So those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I I see one more comment from Daniel. Then I'm gonna go back to Mr. Azan, followed by Mr. Odegaard, so we can wrap up the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add, Sarah is exactly right. When it comes down to the duplexes and and it's extraordinarily difficult to get the information. You know, I did a good analysis of a handful of those and looked at them. It really comes down to a judgment call as to whether or not the council wants to allow two units with five bedrooms being a total of ten. Most of your duplexes are not that intense. Most of them, most of the developers that I spoke with, there was four of them, are doing no more than three. Once you get over three, you start getting into multi-generational housing. And also, all of them stated to me that you get into a significant parking reality issue once you start going over six bedrooms total for the two duplexes, so. And the impacts of of those on a lot. And it is very, very difficult to give you data. It it's just a best judgment call, which is, you know, I had it at six based on the research I'd done. You know, six to eight, eight, I start getting uncomfortable based on the feedback and the research I've done to this point.
Mr. Azan?
Well, based off of Dan's insight and Councilmember McCarthy's thoughtfulness, I'm gonna echo Councilmember McCarthy's suggestion.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As Ms. Harris said, this is very complicated. And then, and when we decide on one item, then it leads to some difficulty on another item, you know, as we go from single-family to duplex and triplex. And then also the parking situation. As I mentioned last week, you know, I'm really concerned about these developments and creating parking problems for the neighborhood. As I had mentioned last week concerning the development that happened there at Railroad Springs that, because HOA considerations forced parking out on the streets into Railroad Springs, which, and you go for three blocks of car after car after car. And I'm not sure how they do it in the wintertime, when you can't park on the street. But I'm fine with the suggestion about the bedroom count, defining the bathroom as a, basically, at least as three-quarters, if not a full bathroom. And then, and then it can still leave up to the single-family residential owners of, you know, doing the, you know, just the toilet sink thing that we see fairly often in single-family homes. So I'm okay with everything. And then I'm a little concerned about the the bedroom count, et cetera, for those duplexes and triplexes. So maybe there might have to be another, just a little work session, or at least an update session before we, I guess, see this in a formal direction. So, thank you.
Who's left? Has everybody weighed in? It looks like everyone has. I'm fine with the current direction that council is headed in with those changes. So with that, I believe we're done with this item. It is five fourteen. Let's take a ten-minute break and come back at, let's come back at five twenty-five? And then we'll pick up on our next item. Thank you. Okay, so we are now down on item number seven. This is case number PZ-19-00123. Updates to the zoning code 2019, Neighborhood Community Commercial, NCT. And we're still with Dan. We can go ahead and get started.
Hi, Mayor. Dan Seimer, thank you for that introduction. And the case before you is, as the mayor indicated, is a Neighborhood Community Commercial Zone. And this, item seven and eight are on the agenda are directly related by, we'll pause between them, because we may want to come back and talk with them, but I'm going to split them apart, because if one doesn't, if we don't want to move forward with the first, with item seven, it it doesn't, we shouldn't talk about, there's no needs to talk about item eight. So on that, on that kind of simple introduction. All right, thank you. The proposed work session, again, is a lot for public comments and suggestions as for the council to allow further suggestions and discussions and directions, if any. No actions taken at this time. So as I indicated earlier, that I, items seven and eight are directly related, although we're gonna hit item seven first, and then we'll move on to, and I'll ask the mayor, when she wants to move on to item eight. The first one is to create the Neighborhood Commercial Zone. Why are we doing that? The Neighborhood Commercial Zone came out of the discussion we had last year and the High Occupancy Housing Plan, specifically regarding the implementation item to amend the zoning code, sorry, amend the zoning code to modify the community commercial zone from sixty feet to forty-five feet. And to address the public's comments, to observe the character of the existing historic neighborhoods in these areas where the community commercial zone is, and that these areas overlap a significant amount of the low-income areas, low-income community areas that could be displaced by gentrification redevelopment. Also, there are, is a small area that may have some issues providing adequate utility capacity to support the larger high occupancy housing developments. So the areas that started this primary discussion that have the community, the existing community commercial zone are, is the North End Neighborhood, which is north of City Hall, goes up to the Bashes Center, the South Side Neighborhood, and the Sunny Side Neighborhood. All those areas that's shown on the screen in pink are currently the community commercial zone, and they have a maximum building height allowance of sixty feet. Now, as I indicated earlier, the High Occupancy Housing Plan suggested to modify that to forty-five feet. When we met last year, last October, the council provide, asked to provide some additional direction and considerations to modify the forty-five-foot building height, and come up with some different alternatives. And and to conduct some additional public outreach. So what we came up with was the idea, instead of modifying the existing community commercial zone, is to come up with a new zoning district that would allow the council to place the forty-five-foot building height in the locations that they desired, and I'll kind of get to that a little bit later. But the idea is a new zone that would reason, that the council could rezone those areas of the community commercial to limit the building height to forty-five feet. Now, I do like to note that this amendment does not affect the existing transect zones. So where there is the the T-five and T-six, which is in your downtown area and a couple of locations in North Side, North End and South Side, those areas will not be affected by the zone. They're being handled through a separate modification potential in the future. So as it pertains to the zone itself, the land uses of the zone are identical to the community commercial zone, so none of that would be changed. All the existing land uses would be the same. As would be all the existing development standards of the community commercial would be identical in the Neighborhood Community Commercial Zone, with the exception of the building height, which would be limited to forty-five feet. So what does forty-five feet mean? This is developed on the southeast corner of Butler and Agassi. It's a well-known project and liked, at least I hear good impact input about it. It's approximately forty-three feet in height to the top of parapet and just below fifty to the apex of the tower. This is the recent project that was just built on San Francisco, which is on the southeast corner of Benton, San Francisco. And to the top of the parapet, there is forty feet. And to the back elevator stairwell shaft, it is forty-six feet. So that kind of gives you an idea of what forty-five to forty, forty to forty-five feet would be in context with a one-story building just south of that. So we're looking at amending the zoning code to create this new zone. The intent is that we could then rezone the specific neighborhoods that I referred to air earlier potentially, or do an alternative option such as a floating zone, but that's more an item eight. So the idea is to create the zone. No, no property would be affected by creating the zone. But it will allow the council and property owners to rezone in so that they can limit their property height, building height to forty-five feet. And the potential schedule is before you, we did go to planning commission. They were supportive of the amendment with the, with the work session. They did have comments on the potential locations, which I'll get into on item eight. But this is where we're looking at right now on the schedule for this. Council, council questions to consider? Is, does the city council desire to proceed with the amendment to create the zone? And does the city council have any additional recommendations or considerations? Like, do we want to limit the land uses or make any other additional modifications? The idea was based on the council's discussion last time that not all areas of the community commercial zone may be appropriate for the forty-five feet and may, sixty feet may be appropriate. And that was also based on public comment. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on the creation of the forty-five-foot zone that could be utilized in the existing CC areas. And if you'd like, I can go back to that map so that you can show where those areas would be located that potentially could use, or the council could provide direction in item eight. So on that, Mayor, I will hand it over to you. Thank you.
Can we go back to the map? And then can we go ahead and move forward with the two public comment cards, please? Ms. Fubar?
Ready.
Terrific, go ahead. Joe, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Is this public comment on item number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so for Mayor and Council, you know, we have concerns on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce about this item. We did have Dan Seimer and Dan Polk and Tiffany Antal make a presentation last week to our Business Advocacy Division meeting, and those folks came up with an assessment of this action that I think a couple of things. One, it would be bad planning and it'd be bad public policy. So I'll talk about the public policy first. Obviously, our concern is the over, if if we were to proceed as as offered here, you could have over a thousand property owners in these areas impacted. And their property rights would be diminished, and those would trigger Prop 207 claims exposing taxpayers in the city to liability. We understand there's a waiver process, and that's where we think we get into a bad planning process, because those people will likely seek waivers, those who don't want to have their property downzoned. And then, once it's downzoned, they'll be able to get a waiver under Prop 207, and you'll have this sort of staggered patchwork throughout these regions of future development. The other reason it's it's bad planning policy and bad public policy is that it goes against the seventy-plus-million-dollar Rio de Flag reconstruction or investment project that we worked so hard to get and support federal dollars for, particularly in the South Side. So those properties would come off the floodplain so that we could have redevelopment in this area, and then those people's property or ability to 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 move forward with redevelopment would be limited here by this item. There's been talk earlier tonight about density and infill and sustainable lifestyles. We walked through this many years ago when we changed the zoning for this region in an attempt to support dense areas and and support areas of infill and and rejuvenate our neighborhoods, particularly these particular neighborhoods, South Side and Ford Street. And now it looks like we're going away from that. So, you know, we're anxious to have more conversation on this item with you. We're grateful for your entertainment of our concerns. We're really concerned about this as it relates to exposing Flagstaff taxpayers to liability moving forward with Prop 207 and discouraging reinvestment and redevelopment of our of our critical core. And then, of course, the impacts that it would have on, you know, the ability to build a little more densely and provide infill, so that we're encouraging walkability and low number of trips. And those are my thoughts, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Council, are there any questions for Mr. Galley? Okay, I do not see any questions. Thank you.
You go. Thanks, Your Honor.
I believe there's one more public comment. You are on.
Hello, Mayor Council. This is David Carpenter. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak on this item. I'll be brief again. I think this is definitely the wrong direction for the city. I think many of you know I'm Flagstaff Green Builder. I pride myself on being an environmentalist. I know a lot about the matter. I've attended Green Build in Chicago five times. I've been to many Eva conferences, infill, growing up, higher density. These are all the things that we cherish in progressive places, which I believe this is. We should be considering literally going up instead of going down. It's the wrong way. We will, we will not accomplish the goals trying to build our city by going down. And we, of course, also are penalizing, again, all the local people that own the properties in the South Side, Sunny Side, and the North End. I think if you had, if you asked me if I had any ideas for how I might compromise this, although I don't actually believe in this either, I think if you, if you really truly believe that this is something that the people want, something they've been itching for, instead of unilaterally broadcasting this across a thousand parcels, make it an opt-in. Let people come to this city and say, my pocket neighborhood, I want to protect. My neighbors and I, we're all here to opt in. Please don't blanket, put this on everyone. It's just gonna create backlash. Thank you.
It looks like we have a comment. Mr. Odegaard?
Well, that was just a comment for after public comment, and so I'll wait, and I know Daniel would probably like to weigh in, and I'd be comfortable waiting till after his comment, and then I'll weigh in.
Okay, so it doesn't look like there's any comments from Mr. Carpenter, so we'll go to Daniel, and then I'll start with Mr. Odegaard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make clear to everyone that item seven is only about the creation of the zone. Item eight is about discussing where, if the council decides to create the zone, where we could place the zone in these areas. So right now, it's just regarding about creating the zone. Thank you, Mayor.
I would say, though, that even though there's a distinction there, it might be, given the questions that I see. I would say, though, that even though there's a distinction there, it might be, given the questions that I see, for example, Mr. Odegaard has asked, and Mr. Aslan, I believe, was trying to ask, is that idea plausible that you can create zones in different locations? And so is that a yes?
Yes, we, we have that throughout the city. We have multiple zones. Like highway commercial is spread out throughout the city. The, the creation of the zone is only creating the zone in the zoning district. It does not amend the map. Item eight would be discussing the map amendment. We could go on to item eight, and I can do a brief presentation on that if you want to talk about these together.
Let's go back to Mr. Odegaard, followed by Mr. Aslan, followed by Ms. Whelan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm struggling with this item personally. You know, I, I value property rights. And, and I understand, you know, there's a, a good interest in the community on this topic concerning height. And there are all these different competing values with everything, as we've heard also from the two speakers. You know, as far as this item, whether we move forward or not, I, me personally, I think I would feel a little more comfortable if we had a little more community input on this item. I know there was a fairly robust reach out, but then COVID hit. And I'm not sure if we've gotten the community response that we need. I know from staff reports, there was a fairly good interest concerning Zoom. Well, as we find out with the world of COVID and Zoom, not everybody has Zoom capability either. Because that requires internet connection, et cetera. And I'm a little concerned, especially for the Sunnyside neighborhood. You know, I, I did go to one meeting, I think it was late last year, and it was at the library, and the participation wasn't that much. There was a few property owners. There was a couple of other community members there, but I just don't think we have the information we know to make a good decision on this item. And so I don't feel comfortable moving this item forward at this time unless if it's possible, maybe just get some more community input on this item. So that's my concern, because moving on to the next item, agenda eight, you know, that deciding, you know, picking winners and losers. And I am not there at all of that type of decision. So, thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Yeah. So, Mr. Carpenter, if you're still listening, thank you for your comments. And I do have a question about one of his suggestions. I think it is appropriate to ask that question now because it affects the way I may think about this. So he talked about small neighborhood groups possibly getting together and opting out, for example. Is that, is that a plausible scenario? And I think this is a sub-question within the larger question that was already addressed just a moment ago. Dan, where we talked about, is it possible to zone different areas differently? I, I, I think this gets more specific.
If I may, Mayor. The, the, whether, whether you can zone different areas, yes. Yeah, any area can have a specific zone as long as it meets the intent of the regional plan and its purpose criteria. The, I do agree that the placement of the zone does need additional outreach. I was going to address that in item eight. The, the neighborhood community commercial zone was in direct relationship to looking at an alternative than just to blanketly change the community commercial zone to forty-five feet, because that was not the direction that we heard last time from the community, and the council was concerned about that also. As it pertains to the zone itself, there was significant support for the zone, but the application of the zone, which is item eight, would, is the area which I agree that we do need significantly more public outreach.
Well, Dan, what about neighbors opting out of being in a certain type of zone?
Yes, the, and that's more the.
Like a parking sort of thing, I would imagine.
I did not catch that last part. You broke it up.
I was just, in my head, I'm likening it to neighbors creating a parking district, although I'm sure that's a slightly different process. I'm just equating the two.
Yeah, the, I mean, there's many ways to, if, once the zone is created, there's many ways to implement it. You, we could, as Mr. Carpenter suggested, you can do an overlay zone, not an overlay zone, but a, what's called a floating zone in planning terms, which is just like our transit zones that you can opt into. You could do, just leave it, just create the zone and let property owners rezone themselves to it. So there's that, and that's essentially an opt-out. The council may choose, and this goes into more of item eight, they can choose an alternative direction, which I don't want to get off too much topic of this item is whether to create the zone or not.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Decton.
Thank you, Maravins. Councilmember Aslan, I want to provide an example of a zone that we do have that fits the scenario that Mr. Carpenter presented. So we do have a floating zone called a landmark overlay zone that we use for historic preservation. And there's only been, besides city properties, a handful of property owners that have opted into this zone, though there are hundreds of property owners who have property that is eligible for it. So I think if you take an opt-in technique, you will probably not achieve the neighborhood scale results that were envisioned for this zone in the HOH plan and the South Side plan that we're going to be having a work session on a little later. Another approach you can take that I think is very valid, if you, if you do not want to just decide how to rezone through the zoning process alone, is you can wait for a specific plan. You can adopt the zone. It now exists. And then you can zone it along with specific plans. However, that's very time-consuming as well. The South Side plan took three years to complete. La Plaza Vieja took about a year and a half. And so, you know, imagining a very large neighborhood by Sunnyside, like Sunnyside, it could be another two to three years once we start the process. So that could push the timeline out further, but allow for a lot more robust public engagement. However, if council, once this, this zone is adopted, chose to do a blanket rezoning, there is a public, there is a process for opting out. So those are kind of your three options, I think. And I think Dan got into them a little. I will say that, that given the high occupancy housing plan's goal of creating compatible density, it's just lowering the building height, not necessarily saying that density won't occur in those areas. I do not know that an opt-in scenario would meet the objectives of the plan. It would be hard to get the scale you need.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I, I believe we're being afforded an opportunity to take a walkabout with not only developers, but business owners and hopefully neighborhood, the community. And I would, you know, I'm such a visual person, I would love to walk these neighborhoods and see and listen to the visions of our community. I know when we did this many years ago, it was so helpful when we walked together and, and answered questions and, and talked about a vision. So I would hope that when that opportunity arises, we would all be willing to do that. Thank you.
And so I just wanted to, you know, jump in and be part of this conversation. I think something you just said, Ms. Whelan, is key, right? To do a walkabout and talk to the community, the people that live there, and ask them what their vision is for their community. Now, I understand that community plans and neighborhood plans take time, but this is something that I think that should be done by the community, by the neighborhoods. Specifically, you know, the Sunnyside neighborhood has been asking for a plan. In fact, that neighborhood has presented council, not this council, but council in the past, four different plans, asking for those plans to be approved, and they have never been approved. And so in understanding what we're doing here, I really think that before we create something and have people either opt in or opt out, we should actually go sit down and have a chat with them. You know, there was a community meeting. It's my understanding, like, three or four people who own businesses or own property on Fourth Street went to those. I can tell you that the individuals that own property, especially commercial-type property in the neighborhood, were not at those meetings. I'm not interested in moving this forward at all. I really think that what we need to do is we need to sit down and determine, okay, what areas would this maybe benefit? And then go and talk to those individuals very specifically. And when it comes to the Sunnyside neighborhood, there needs to be a neighborhood plan. And we need to take time, just like we have managed to take time in Plaza Vieja and South Side and other neighborhoods. And this is where council, as we talk about priorities and priority-based budgeting, you know, having a robust community planning, we call it department. Sarah Decton does a great job, but I think she's our only neighborhood planner, and she has a bunch of other things that we also give her to do. You know, I truly think that it would be wise to invest in some of these places to make sure we get neighborhood plans done in a timely fashion. I'm going to go to Mr. McCarthy, and then I'm going to go to the next public comment.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think item seven is, I don't have any problem with. I think it's probably a good idea. Item eight, that's more complicated. And I would like to say that I think the community has been crying out for restrictions on sixty-foot buildings. And if, if sixty-foot buildings start being built, like in Sunnyside, for instance, I think people are going to go crazy, and they'll be mad. So I don't think we can do this in such a way that it's going to take three years. It, it might take three months. I think we could do that. But I think the, I support the, the new zoning type. But again, when we get to number eight, that'll be a little more difficult discussion. The other thing I'll say is that I have some questions that are appropriate for an e-session. Now, I don't know that we want to do that tonight, but I think we're going to, at least I will want to do, get the answers to my e-session questions before I make any final decision on number eight. So that's it for now. Thank you.
We're going to go to our city attorney and then go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that there may be some questions for an executive session on this, and I, I wanted to jump in and say we've anticipated that. That would absolutely be something we're, we're willing to provide you, counsel, an opportunity to do that. So let's see where this goes here, and, and we can work an e-session in here in the near future. Also, wanted to make sure that if anything, if you, if you need to do an e-session now, yes, we can. If you want to put this off until later, we can do that later. But at the same time, I just wanted to make sure you knew that was a possibility.
Mayor, this is Jim McCarthy. Can I follow up to that?
Yeah.
The, the e-session questions I have, have more to do with number eight than with number seven. Thank you.
So are you going to need an e-session tonight, Mr. McCarthy?
I, I definitely do not need an e-session on number seven. On number eight, I think I do before we make a final decision. I think we can have a discussion on it, but I wouldn't be prepared to vote one way or the other until I have an e-session on number eight.
I believe that the, I just think it's really important for us to note that we do have another neighborhood planner. Mark Rivas, I think that's the last name. So we need to give a shout out to him. Let's go to the vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments are actually very much in line with Councilmember McCarthy's. I, I think that we should definitely create the zone, and I think that we have heard a lot from the public via cry about sixty-foot buildings. And although I agree with Mr. Carpenter regarding infill and density, I think that the shock to go from where our neighborhoods are today to sixty-foot maxed-out buildings to our code is, is quite a shock to our community. And, and, and I think that forty-five feet is that mid, that middle ground of the next step. So, and I still think that we can build fairly dense projects in forty-five-foot parameters. So, so on this agenda topic, I think I'm a yes. I think we should move forward with it, and then we can talk about the next agenda item when that comes. Thank you.
So I'm trying to get a sense of how many council members are interested in moving this topic forward, are moving on to eight. I'm going to need for you guys to verbalize it. So I'm going to start with Mr. Aslan.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm willing to open this can of worms and see where it takes us. I do have concerns, and I have questions as well. I'm, it'd be interesting to see if I have the same questions as Mr. McCarthy or not. But I'm, I, I would like to see, I would, I would like to explore this a little bit further and learn a little bit more before shutting it down. I, I'm, I'm open-minded about how we proceed, and that means I'm willing to say yes for item seven here, just to move things forward.
Okay, I'm going to bounce over to the public comment, and then I'll go back to Ms. Solis.
We are ready for your public comments.
I'm sorry, you're, you are ready for it?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't heard her call for me yet.
Oh, go ahead.
You want me to go ahead and make my comment?
Yes, please. You're on a delay on the.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor and council members for the opportunity to speak. I'm, I'm speaking up as a, in my role and stand-up for flagstaff. And I would like to point out, as, as both Councilman McCarthy and Vice Mayor Shimoney have pointed out, we have been hearing for the last five years over and over again about height. And, and so it's possible. It's possi-
You will need to turn off the volume on the computer and just speak directly to us. There's a delay when you speak through the computer. So that's why it seems like we're not listening.
Okay. All right. So to continue that thought, but you've heard what I've said so far?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, that's confusing. So, so people have spoken up over and over again about this. It's very possible, I know that there was not a lot of response to this particular item when it was, when there were community meetings on this. But it's very possible that people get kind of burnt out on this, and they feel like they've expressed this over and over again. And do they need to come and express it again? Well, of course they do, but at any rate, they have expressed this. And the other thing I'd like to point out is that forty-five feet does not preclude high density or even HOH from being built. So I, I find that the argument that it is, is not a, in line with climate considerations to be not exactly accurate. There is still high density would, would still work perfectly well with this height limit. And this is more addressing the character of neighborhoods and the character of, of the places, especially these established neighborhoods. So that's my comment.
Is there any feedback or any comments for Ms. Jones? You know, I would say this, because I think this, this is important, and I want, you know, everyone to overstand me, I guess, when I say this. you know, everyone to overstand me, I guess, when I say this. I think it's important that you actually go and have a conversation with the people that live in the neighborhoods. When it comes to Sunnyside, without a doubt, we don't have six-story buildings there. And most likely, the community would not want six-story buildings. But the fact of the matter is, is that community has come before council at least four different times with a neighborhood plan that council has not heard or listened to. And so I think before we do something and just automatically include people who have been asking for a seat at the table and asking for their voice to be heard, we should make a conscious attempt to go do that. And I think if we do something without actually going out and engaging that community, then I think what happens is that community feels further that they're not being listened to, and they feel further that there's people from outside of their neighborhood actually making decisions for them, when they're very capable of speaking and talking for themselves. That is why I'm telling council, before we step and say we're going to do something on behalf of the neighborhood, we really should try to actually go and listen to the neighborhood. Yeah, that's gonna be a lot harder when it comes to doing things in COVID, but I do think it's gonna be something that's valuable. Um, and so I just wanna keep stressing that. I think if we make a step to do something by creating something or moving forward with something, and we really haven't engaged that neighborhood, then once again, this council, this council, all the councils before it are making decisions on behalf of people, and they have not engaged with them. So that's why I am firm that we need to go talk to the community. I see that Ms. Whelan has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Maria, I'm glad you're here, and, um, I appreciate what you've said. And I agree that in the South Side, um, and because of the plan at, uh, with Plaza Vieja, I understand what direction they want to go in, but I don't have that direction for the South Side or the, um, Sunnyside community. And, and I'm just drawing on our experience that, that during the museum fire, we said, we're gonna have a community meeting in the middle of the street at seven PM. Please come out and, and let's talk about this. Those kinds of things don't have to take years and years. I think, um, I, I think they can be done. And I would like to hear from not only the community that lives in those areas, but I would like to hear from the people who, who have options to develop in those areas. I wanna hear all sides. So with that in mind, I'm gonna agree with you, Mayor, that I do not want this held, but I certainly want an opportunity to walk with our staff, community, and, and developers or business owners to get, these are, these are big decisions, um, to, to get their input before I make the decision. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I, I support what you said. Um, I'm happy to do that. I don't wanna, I wanna see us come up with a plan, though, like, like Councilmember Whelan said, that doesn't take a long time. Let's, let's come up with a, with a quicker way to address this. You know, whatever that looks like, maybe it's bringing back the plans that that community had brought forward to other councils. Maybe that's doing what council members, something along the lines of what Councilmember Whelan was saying. But, long story short, I'm supportive of that. I, I understand this probably item number eight, not item number seven. So I would say I'm yes on seven still, and then I guess we'll just further discussion when we get to eight.
Ms. Whelan, were you yes on seven?
Can you give me a minute with that? I'll get back to you.
Ms. Salas?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I echo your, your, um, very eloquently articulated perspective. Uh, I am with you in, uh, advocating for, for, uh, the neighborhoods, uh, especially the neighborhoods who feel that they are forgotten and marginalized. Um, and we are in this, this position to make a decision on behalf of those neighborhoods, especially Sunnyside, La Plaza Vieja, um, and South Side. Um, I wanna give, I wanna make sure that our neighborhoods are seen and heard and have a voice on the table before I could make an informed decision. Uh, I, over the summer break, I had the opportunity to meet with, with La Plaza Vieja, um, Sunnyside and South Side leaders. That's why I, 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 um, had a request before we took a summer break is to invite the different neighborhood associations. So far, we have three. And, um, would like to hear from each neighborhood what their challenges are, what the opportunities are, and this may be an opportunity to discuss what we have on the table today. So I'm not ready, I'm not ready to, 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 uh, yeah. Definitely not, not running it too forward with eight, uh, with seven, just for discussion only.
Okay, uh, Mr. McCarthy, did you wanna weigh in?
Oh, I think I've said mostly what I wanna say. I do support, uh, seven. On the other hand, if, if eight turns out to be a solid no, then there'd be no need to do seven. Um, I, I do think it would be good to have, uh, discussions with, uh, the, the neighborhoods, but I, I would hope that could be done in a way that doesn't take three years. I'm hoping it could be done in a way that could be done in a couple of months. Um, and then, again, on, on number eight, I do have e-session questions that I need to discuss before I really take a hard position one way or the other.
Vice Mayor, were you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Aslan, you were a yes?
I am.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, um, I, yes, I guess as Councilmember Aslan said, I'm a no at this time, 'cause I would really like to have that conversation with Sunnyside. I just don't think it's been there, especially the interior of Sunnyside, to have a conversation. Yes, we've done very robust efforts since twenty sixteen to hear from the downtown area, but we haven't talked to the East Side at all, really, in my opinion. And so I, I'm gonna be a no, just because, but I would still like to have that conversation with Sunnyside residents, and then go from there, so.
Mr. Whel-, Ms. Whelan?
Uh, that's exactly where I'm at, Mayor. I don't think this needs to take a lot of time. Um, and with a little bit of time that council could put in, we could get some answers from our neighborhoods. So, uh, I'm with that decision to no on seven, postponing seven with the caveat of community contact. Not only community contact, but business developers, whoever wants to show up, especially our staff being there because they're so knowledgeable. Um, I would want that all to happen, um, first. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so it sounds like we have four-three decision to not move forward, and I respect the will of council. And I think what this is about is proper communication, right? And I agree that that's very important, and I'm happy to proceed that way. The point I'd like to make is that we actually have to follow through on this now and do the communication. Um, I know this isn't the case, Mayor Evans, but it could be interpreted, what we're kinda doing is stalling out here and pushing this to the side. And on the contrary, um, if we can actually follow through and, and really make these conversations happen and try to do some, at least preliminary stuff in short term, um, we'll, I think we'll be hitting all those, uh, we'll be crossing our Ts and dotting all of our Is in that case. I just don't wanna, this to be an excuse to drop the ball. And I'm sure you agree with that.
And I a hundred percent agree with that, and I wanna make clu-, make sure that, um, council and those of you who are listening don't think that what I'm trying to do is stall, um, or not move forward. What I'm suggesting is that we actually go out and engage the people that are gonna be impacted. Um, and the fact of the matter is, is that we have not gone out and talked to this neighborhood. And I think what happens is when decisions are made and communities are not, um, included in those decisions, that's when you start having resentment, and you start, start making things harder, not only for the individuals in the community, but also to get good policy passed. So if the idea is that we go and we do something in a blanket way, where the community's either not aware or they have other ideas, and then they can all opt out, well then I guess, you know, the whole land use that you're trying to achieve doesn't happen. Or if you have people that don't understand how they can opt out or opt in, they may or may not use what it is that we need for them to use. Also, when you look at the map that was put up and the concept of where should sixty-story buildings be and where should they not be, there has been, um, discussions in the past that Fourth Street, at least the East Side of Fourth Street, should be another downtown, right? And so when you're including all of Fourth Street without looking at prior planning documents and what the community had to say about it, does Sunnyside wanna go to six stories within Sunnyside proper? I can tell you that's a no. But Fourth Street, especially the East Side of Fourth Street, that's really owned by three families that has come into play recently, that might go to six, that might go to six stories, and that particular neighborhood might be interested. I don't know. But I think that we should actually go out and talk to the people before we just assume that we know what should happen in that neighborhood. Um, I do believe that all of us, there's seventy-five thousand people get to weigh in on it, but I do think maybe we should start with the people that directly live there first and maybe go out. That's just my suggestion. I see that we have Ms. Whelan, and then we have Ms. Odegaard.
Mayor, I just want, um, Councilmember Aslan to know that I've already put in the request for City Manager and Jason to schedule, um, something like this walkabout that we're talking about. So hopefully, we'll have council support, staff support, and, uh, community support to get this done. Thank you.
Ms. Odegaard?
Excellent.
Yes, Mayor, uh, you know, that's exactly right. We, we, uh, we have heard from the community, especially from the downtown area, yes. Um, is there a path forward to do something? But again, we haven't heard, um, from the Sunnyside. And I wanna thank, uh, Councilmember Whelan, um, to be proactive and, um, make something happen, so we can hear all the residents. 'Cause as you look at that map, you know, concerning Sunnyside, that's a big, pretty much all of Sunnyside for the most part. And I know there's no way we've had the participation we would like to see from the Sunnyside, other than we've heard from a few business owners, from a few community members, but we really haven't heard from the Sunnyside neighborhood itself. And, and it'd be good even, um, to have those meetings. Hopefully, uh, they can happen sooner than later, uh, especially, you know, with COVID. But hopefully, we can have some resolution, um, that we can revisit, uh, and make a, a wise decision for the community, um, hopefully by the end of this year. So, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna go to, uh, Daniel, and then I think we're done with this item for now.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That was gonna be my question is, um, I agree wholeheartedly that we need additional public outreach on this topic. Uh, that was gonna be my recommendation for item eight. So I, um, if the, if the direction is to not move forward at this time and get additional outreach as to whether or not to create the zone at, uh, move forward with creating the zone and do more public outreach, I just wanna make sure that I'm, uh, clear on that direction and, um, we're not mixing item eight with item seven. I do think, uh, what I hear right now is that we don't wanna move forward with creating the zone at this time and to do, to go out and do more public outreach. I do agree with you a hundred percent that the, uh, public outreach was minimal, uh, as indicated in my staff report. Um, yeah, the, the Sunnyside actually had the highest response rate, but I do agree that, uh, um, additional public outreach is needed, uh, whether we move forward to create the zone now or to even rezone, uh, as under, under item eight. So, um, I just wanna make sure that I have clear direction, uh, that the, from the council, that the direction is that, um, is either A, not to move forward at this time and continue with additional public outreach, or move forward and, uh, and then not move forward on the rezoning at this time. So that's, uh, an item eight. So that's, I just wanna make sure, uh, we're clear on that. I'm clear on that, because, um, I don't wanna be mixing the two items together. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Okay, um, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, super quick, I was just gonna say, in our outreach planning, we should just be culturally sensitive and, and do our best to accommodate multi-language, um, approach and different, you know, maybe Spanish, for example, can be things that we translate into our flyers or into our outreach or into even our communications when we do host get-togethers in case it's needed. Thank you.
Ms. Decter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Evans. I would like to just say my experience so far with outreach in Sunnyside has been that I think that we will need to do some, some, uh, touching base on what that public engagement might take to be successful. Um, uh, my anticipation is that for the city to be successful doing outreach in Sunnyside, we might need some ambassadors from that community to help us talk to their neighbors. It's not a place where Dan, um, can send out a notice and expect to get a ton of response. Or where, um, even those city employees can go door-to-door, we can have an outdoor meeting. Um, our experience has been that the turnout tends to be fairly low based on the last two or three years. Um, and some of that may be because of the points Mayor Evans made, that there was a twenty-sixteen effort that had pretty good public engagement that was not actually adopted by council. Um, it could be some of the language barriers, but it's actually one of the hardest neighborhoods, um, for the city as an entity to conduct outreach in. And it may be that, that the resources needed to reach out there, um, may take some, some work just to develop. Um, so, uh, so just, I just want that to be in, um, your mind as we're talking about this, because I he, I heard two things. I heard, go see if we can get this done in three or four months. But if we're not trusted and, um, we have issues associated with, um, language barriers, I think we will, staff will have to go back and, and come back to you maybe and discuss whether or not we have the resources to be successful at what you're asking. I don't know that we, I'm sure we could commit to doing more outreach, certainly, um, but I think we need to take us, uh, breadth to evaluate how to be effective at it, um, because we've just not had that success in the last few years. At least that's been my experience on multiple projects.
And I will just follow up with that, and I will say, um, you know, cities, I do not believe the issue with the outreach has to do with city staff. Okay, I do believe we can go and ask partners and whatnot to help with, um, help with the outreach, but that is not what the issue is. Um, I'm speaking as somebody who's been in and out of that neighborhood now for about thirty years, you know, as somebody who is, um, with the, the Neighborhood Association and as a property owner, once a resident in that neighborhood. You know, there was a huge community outreach, um, that, uh, Ms. Decter was talking about, and I think it was two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. And that was the fourth time the neighborhood came together. We had not only Sunnyside, but we had Upper and Lower Greenlaw, parts of Shadow Mountain. It was a huge effort. The neighborhood literally redesigned what it is they wanted their neighborhood to look like. We talked about Fourth Street, we talked about slowing traffic, we talked about the realignment of Seventh Avenue and Sixth Avenue. It was a huge, uh, community endeavor, and I think it took almost a year. That plan came to council, and council completely rejected it, really disrespected the neighborhood and acted like the neighborhood maybe didn't have the right or shouldn't have been involved that deeply in the process. And ever since then, what I have seen is you have people who have hard feelings about it. This, this outreach was done in like- This, this outreach was done in like three different languages. I mean, it was a big, heavy lift and that was the fourth time the neighborhood came to the council with a plan, four times since I've been involved with the neighborhood. So I really think that is the resistance or that is the apathy, for lack of a, a better word, that the city now gets from the neighborhood because the neighborhood's like, we've already told you what we want. You guys have a plan. I was the council member that actually got the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars set aside so we could actually do that neighborhood planning effort. And the only thing that came out of that neighborhood planning effort was those little blinky lights on Fourth Street. So people could get across the road. That was it. And so the rest of the plan, I guess, was put on a shelf somewhere. So I just want to say that, you know, what happened when it came to the museum fire and us going out and being able to talk on the streets, that was some of us in our individual capacity going to those particular places and saying, hey, we really need to talk to you. So I mean, some of us can do that again, but I guess I would say that when the neighborhood, if they come back out and they say, this is what we'd like to see, it would be really um, um it, to me, it would behoove council, whoever's on council at this time, to actually listen. Because the issue is, just like Southside, Plaza de Ahá, neighborhoods like Sunnyside, and there's other neighborhoods in town, we don't listen. We go out and we get information, then we decide, no, we do something completely different. Um I see a question from Mr. Aslan and then I see a question from Mr. McCarthy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I don't mean this to be feisty at all. It's actually a totally honest question. Um so I, uh I hope you receive it in that spirit, but given all that you've just said and the concerns that Ms. Decter has raised, I feel like we're going in a little bit of a circle here, or at least potentially. Um and I want to game out what we do in the instance that we're not getting the sort of feedback that we're all sitting here saying we need. Um where there's a will, there's a way, right? At least ninety-five percent of the time. And I think uh I want to be optimistic and charge forward um and go through the effort so that at least we can say that we did that um and hopefully get a, a nice response. But if, if uh your worst fears um are being realized, where does that put us and and how does that affect the landscape um moving this zoning conversation along?
I'm not saying that we don't try at all. What I'm just saying is that those are, that's the backstory because one of the questions you, it seemed like was being asked is why isn't the neighborhood maybe as robust as other neighborhoods? I know, I do think we lean on community partners that are there. You, we lean on personal relationships and individuals to try to get the community to come out and respond. But I just want us to know that as the community comes out and responds, I may or may not be here when this conversation is over with. I'm just saying that it would be nice if whoever is on council listens. And it might be that there's certain areas that are not going to go to sixty feet, but you might hear that certain areas of Fourth Street, people are okay with that. So I'm just saying that we actually need to receive the feedback and listen to it.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. You basically just said that we already did a lot of outreach and it got ignored. But if we already did that outreach, can we use the input from that to help us guide in this decision without going through the whole process again and uh, you know, risk that the people there think, oh, here we go again, wasting our time one more time. If we already have the data from before, why can't we use that as our guide?
I would say that um we could definitely pull up the data and we should and we should look at whatever the plan is. What I've noticed about Flagstaff is in five years, other people might have moved in and then they might not like what the people before them, they, before them did. So it might be worth pulling up what was there, seeing what was there, seeing if we can get information out of it and then seeing if there's any new people that have any new ideas that they want to add to it, right? Um and so I don't think it should take years, but I do think that, you know, we need to invest a little bit of time in making sure that we, that we're heard. I'm gonna ask the city manager if he feels like he has direction.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council and staff for a thoughtful discussion. I think we do have direction and I'm just going to uh uh combine a few comments that I've heard of late, which is there might be good information uh stemming from previous neighborhood meetings. We should at least be utilizing that to frame the discussion going forward and that discussion should happen uh with a little bit of haste, but recognizing that, that it's, it's the process of the meeting and and uh ensuring that we have good participation. Um that is as equally as important as the outcomes that derive from it. So uh it's going to be imperative that we have a, a very good, successful outreach with the neighborhood. And then I think I've also heard suggestions that we should rely on outside uh interests and and partnerships to help us um forge these meetings uh s- to, to make it uh very effective and and uh try to avoid the appearance that this is just another city forum, but rather something much greater than that.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna go ahead and move on. We're gonna, we're going to skip then I will, I guess it will be eight and go out to number nine. And actually, we are going to um, we're gonna reschedule. Okay, we're not gonna take up eight, so I'm not sure if we do the public comment for eight. That would be a legal question.
Mayor, council, if you're not gonna be having a discussion on number eight, then no, you don't take any public comment on it. If you're pushing that out later, you don't take public comment tonight.
Thank you. We're gonna reorder the agenda. We're gonna actually skip um item number um nine and come back to that. We are going to go to item number ten. So this would be engineering standards, so it would be street lighting and traffic signals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Jeff Baumann, City Traffic Engineer, here this evening to talk to you about engineering standard updates. Um I'm gonna provide you with a review of the engineering standard updates for street lighting, traffic signals, markings and fiber optic conduit, which are on next week's regular agenda for consideration of a first read of an ordinance uh to adopt these standards. The first group of updates to review tonight is chapter thirteen twelve, which is street lighting, uh thirteen twelve of City Code, which is street lighting. Uh streetlighting updates are the result of the sleds project, which is, of course, street lighting to enhance dark skies. We have a core group that have worked on sleds over time and are fortunate to have most of them on the line tonight on this team's meeting. So I'll just run through quickly who, who the sleds team group are, and I think most of them are on the line except for Jeff Hall. And we're all prepared if, if need be to answer any questions or provide any input. So on the, on the call is Fred Verba, uh Stephen Williams and Mike DiBattorio of the Naval Observatory Flagstaff Station, uh Chris Luganbuehl of the Dark Skies Coalition, Rick Barrett and myself are kind of the city staff that have been supporting this project. I don't think he's on the line, but I want to mention Dave Wessel gave us a lot of support early on in this project, um so I just mentioned him. And then, as I said, Jeff Hall's not available, but he wanted me to read or I offered to read a quick statement. So his quick statement is, I send my regrets at not being able to join, but it's fantastic to see sleds uh coming to fruition and I much appreciate the collaboration and effort from Jeff, Rick and all staff and council for their continued, excuse me, strong support of exemplary dark sky lighting and flagstaff. Again, that was from Jeff Hall at Lowell Observatory. Excuse me. So here's the rough uh project timeline and sleds. I, we've seen, I've gone over many of this before, but I thought I'd do a history just in case um it's not fresh in everyone's mind as it may be in mine. So this is roughly the project history. Technically sleds began in twenty fifteen, but Flagstaff's LED lighting testing began uh back in twenty thirteen. Flagstaff has primarily used low-pressure sodium or LPS lighting since nineteen eighty-nine. LPS can be identified, of course, by its distinctive orange color at night and by its rec, long rectangular shoebox-shaped fixtures by day. Um in the early twenty teens, roughly, the city started to experience rising maintenance costs, more frequent fixture outages and began to recognize a pattern of structural fa- failures of the lighting poles, which is the vertical element where it attaches to the horizontal element, uh which is the mast arm. We were having some actual breakage um issues and that really, really started this project and that was back early twenty teens. As a result, um we, we thought the initial fix could be to replace some of our low-pressure sodium large heavy fixtures with smaller LED fixtures up on Highway eighty-nine North, which is where we were having most of our issues. Um also our strongest wind corridor. What was commercially available at the time was white LEDs of sufficient size, so we put up fifty white LEDs. Um shortly after our ins, the installation, we were introduced to the folks that became our sleds project team. Um they called the city manager's office, weren't terribly happy with our white light installation because it had all sorts of problems. Um dark sky preservation, sky glow, all sorts of things that we learned quickly with, that was a mistake. So um as we know, white, white LEDs contribute to sky glow far more than limited spectrum, uh low-pressure sodium or narrow-band amber. We met with that group several times and came to realize that the solution to future Flagstaff lighting wasn't, wasn't obvious and wasn't commercially available at the time. Um an idea was hatched from that, those discussions, and that's kind of where Dave Wessel and Jeff Hall really uh took over the project at the beginning, um to create a dark skies conference called Blinded by the Light. Uh we brought engineers, dark sky advocates, industry, all came together in Flagstaff to talk about street lighting and what maybe Flagstaff could do moving forward from LPS. Lots of great ideas were shared, lots of contacts were made. It was, it was a great conference, but we did not come up with a solution. Out of that conference, we worked with MPO a little bit more on some funding support and hired in twenty fifteen, Monrad Engineering as our consultant to help us try to figure out the, our lighting solution. Uh Monrad Engineering was a lot of help. We worked hard through twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen on different ideas, different modeling. The sleds team met pretty frequently and finally came up with um some testing ideas in twenty eighteen. We, we ended up with about three arterial sections, Butler, Fourth Street and Route sixty-six for some arterial test fixtures and tried two different types of fixtures. And we changed out the south side of the Cheshire neighborhood with three different types of fixtures. Um those all went up in twenty eighteen and that's kind of when we were, we were the most public. So our test fixtures went up in twenty eighteen. We did a cityscape article announcing the project. We had a public survey. We hung neighborhood door hangers all through Cheshire. And then we borrowed a mountain line bus in the summer of eighteen and I know a couple of council members that are still on council went with us that night and, and toured our test sites of the arterials and the uh local streets in Cheshire. We had a good time and we learned quite a bit and got a lot of good feedback. And from that testing have modified um a bunch of different things from our fixtures uh going forward in response to the feedback we received and the technical expertise feedback we received. Throughout the process, uh we've had different, different things come up. This picture on the right is an online news article that we were a part of ARS Technica, how ARS, how Flagstaff, Arizona switched LEDs without giving astronomers a headache. So that was a great article. Uh we were on NPR in Phoenix. Different municipalities have reached out to us to ask about the project and we provided some guidance and some feedback on their lighting. So Flagstaff continues to be somewhat at the forefront or maybe really is at the forefront of this dark sky lighting um of business. So that brings us to now, or or do, I have one more, sorry, city council work sessions we did in May of seventeen, March of eighteen, August of nineteen, August of twenty now, and this is all aiming towards adoption next month of sleds and the LED um lighting updates. Next slide. So um LED lighting equipment. So here's, here's the main concept that drives all of the lighting updates. Flagstaff's conversion to narrow-band amber. Flagstaff is traditionally, at least since nineteen eighty-nine, use low-pressure sodium or LPS as our preferred and standard lighting source. All new installations have been LPS since nineteen eighty-nine. And the existing invent, so in a little bit of history, the existing inventory pre-nineteen eighty-nine consisted primarily of other sources such as metal halide mercury vapor, which are of white or bluish-white light and high-pressure sodium. The metal halides and the mercury vapors were purposely replaced, while the high-pressure sodium, back in eighteen nine, eighteen ninety-nine, it was decided that we'd replace the fixtures only when they had a significant failure. So we continue to replace light bulbs, but not replace the fixture unless there was a significant failure. What we've ended up with today is about, about seventy-five percent low-pressure sodium and we still have about twenty-five percent of our inventory in high-pressure sodium. Here's one of the main uh topics of the engineering standards and that's the residential roadway lighting. One of the things in addition to switching from low-pressure sodium LED, this is one of the main topics that uh I want to bring to your attention and talk to you about a little tonight. So in Flagstaff, our current standard is to provide roadway lighting on all residential local streets at about a three-hundred-foot spacing and with the spacing aligned with intersections and special roadway conditions. Well, you know, it's about three hundred feet and then we'll, then we'll move them around a bit for the end of the road, like a cul-de-sac or a curve or intersections. That's what we do today. What we're proposing for our new standards is that we continue to do residential local roadway lighting in the urban context, but require lighting only at intersections with higher classification streets in the suburban and rural context. So um this, this is quite a change from what we've been doing, but we do have some examples of this today that you might be familiar with. So neighborhoods like Equestria in the States do not have lighting. Uh University Heights, the whole original section, kind of the lower section in front, doesn't have any roadway lighting. And the new Timber Sky, which probably many people haven't been through yet, actually follows this proposed standard exactly. So we didn't put any lights on the residential streets except at the major intersections. And we have a couple of reasons to go down this route. Residential roadway lighting is provide, provided mainly for comfort and aesthetics and doesn't really provide a safety benefit uh because in residential areas with lower speeds, headlights can do um all of the work that you need at night. You don't actually need the supplemental uh roadway lighting. So for that reason, combined with some energy consumption savings, long-term maintenance cost savings and every less light that we put out on the street helps preserve our dark skies. Let me, this is uh kind of the next step after we have new engineering standards and this is, this is kind of bouncing back and forth between engineering standards and sleds, but this is our planned retrofit. So um this is what we'll do after the proposed engineering standards are updated. So the sleds team has looked through our existing inventory of low-pressure sodium and high-pressure sodium and test LED fixtures like the ones we have out on North eighty-nine. The white ones are actually still up. Um and we've gone street by street and even fixture by fixture in some cases and we've created this, we've done a map of all thirty-five hundred fixtures to figure out what the conversion will be to LEDs because you don't just replace one old, one old LPS for one new LED. There's not a straight conversion because what we found is we had a lot of fixtures that were too big in residential areas. We found arterial streets with fixtures that were too small. So the conversion wasn't quite that simple, but we've worked through it and we have a plan um for that conversion. For funding, um proposition four nineteen provides eight million dollars over the first seven years of the program. So that money became available July first, twenty twenty. So we're in good shape uh with timing on this. Again, the mapping defines the translation from existing high-pressure sodium and low-pressure sodium to narrow-band amber. And in some limited instances, it's a subset of streets, a subset of the arterials and the major collectors will be using phosphor-converted amber, which isn't our standard going forward, but it's our kind of Band-Aid retrofit in some of these larger streets where we don't have good pole spacing and can't use the lower output narrow-band amber fixtures. We have to use the larger phosphor-converted amber. If you look at the map, you can't really tell, you know, individually, but you can see all the green is narrow-band amber and the kind of orange, light orange color is the phosphor-converted amber. One more section in uh to highlight in the lighting standards and this is the requested modifications to the existing system. Um it's fairly infrequent, but on occasion we receive requests to either add or delete lighting in residential areas. Um it can go both ways. Um in this particular example, this is a cul-de-sac in Boulder Point and we had a request to install a new fixture at the end of the cul-de-sac. The process is we check the engineering standards to see if adding that light would violate the standards or if it would be in line with the standards. In this case, it was kind of like the light actually was missing because the nearest light was over three hundred feet away. So after we determine if a light should, if a light will go in and meet the standards or if we take it out and we will still meet the standards on the street, that's kind of or if we take it out and we will still meet the standards on the street, that's kind of our first sign off. Second step is to get concurrence from all the impacted neighbors. And then the new step that we're adding to the engineering standards of this lighting section is that we'll, after we make all those determinations, then we'll hold a public hearing with the transportation commission for a final approval or sign off on either removing or adding a lighting fixture. And again, this usually happens in residential areas. And that was what I wanted to talk about for sleds and LED lighting. That's generally my presentation. Again, we're scheduled for first read next week. I'd be happy now to take any questions, comments. And again, most of the project team is on the line if you have any questions for them or would like any feedback.
Counsel, any feedbacks, any comments? Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, team. I'll be brief. I continue to be very excited about this. I'm really appreciative that our community and that our city staff is showing such great leadership on this. And I continue to remain optimistic that what we do will spread and we can gain some of our dark back regionally. And I would like to keep working on a regional dark sky plan as we move forward and see if we can deliberately and cooperatively work with other communities around Northern Arizona and Southern Utah and Nevada and New Mexico to really expand this black hole that we've got going. Black hole is a bad term, but you know what I mean. Thank you all.
That was a horrible pun, but thank you. Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. And thank you, Jeff Baumann, for bringing this forward. It's really exciting to be at this point. I've been waiting for this day for a long time, as you have and as a council and as the community has for this data, this project of moving forward and finding that nexus that works for our dark sky community and for our community and providing safety. And so, thank you very much. I'm pretty excited that we're finally here.
Anybody else on council want to weigh in? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you for your presentation. Can you tell me who is our dark skies coordinator?
On city staff?
Hi, this is Dan Falk. We have a dark sky specialist. His name is Mark Stento.
Okay. And so my question centers around the examples, Jeff, that you put up there were neighborhoods that had sidewalks and things like that. Many of us live in neighborhoods with no sidewalks. And so at nighttime, it becomes even more hazardous. In fact, we don't even have lines on the streets. So we don't have biking lanes or anything like that. So my question is, could we have certain zones or can neighborhoods opt into the lighting when it becomes a safety issue? Or are we just saying no more street lighting only at intersections?
Thank you for that question, and I can provide some clarification. So this is our, for our retrofit, we are replacing all of the lighting fixtures that are in residential neighborhoods today with new LED fixtures. The proposal is for new subdivisions, which always get sidewalks, to not install lighting fixtures except at intersections. So existing neighborhoods would not be impacted by that proposed standard going forward for new construction.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. So thank you so much for this presentation. We're excited to see it moving along.
Thank you. I have a second section.
Okay.
Are you? I'll jump right into that. I wanted to pause at the end of LED lighting, then I have the next section, which is also pretty quick. So the next section of engineering standard updates is Chapter 1316. And this is traffic signals, signing, markings and fiber optic conduit. Just have a couple of slides here and I can, hopefully I can get my cursor. There's my cursor. Let me make it more visible for you. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of the changes. This is a new standard detail that goes along with sleds. This is our new streetlight installation detail. You can see we're referencing new LED fixtures. And we're also updating the structural information on streetlight details and traffic signal poles. You may have noticed around town, we've replaced most every street name sign in neighborhoods with larger font. That larger font requires a larger sign and a new sign blade size and new mounting. So that's a new standard we've put together. And then here's a shared lane marking. This is one example of all the markings and legends and symbols that we put on pavement. We provided new information, engineering standards for material, new references to specifications along those lines. So there's those updates. And we also have updated the signal design and equipment section. So signal specifications for traffic signal controllers. This is a traffic signal controller. It's essentially the computer in the cabinet. We previously didn't have any reference and we needed to provide some information for capital projects and developer led projects when we're doing traffic signal work. Fiber optic terminations, that's some detail about this stuff going on here, the fiber optic network. We've updated our UPS or uninterrupted power supply system. That's these batteries and controller you see in this cabinet so that we can maintain traffic signals during short power outages for a couple of hours. We're also updating our specifications for accessible pedestrian signals. This is more of a standard pedestrian signal. The accessible pedestrian signals have a special design for the shape of the button, the amount of force it takes to push the button. There's some feedback with a light and vibraltactile feedback when you push the button. And not pictured, but we also are updating the vehicle detection system specifications. We traditionally have used loop detectors in the pavement. Modern, more modern technology uses radar or microwave or machine vision cameras. So we're updating our specifications for those. Talk a little bit about the fiber optic network. This is a map that CJ Perry and IT has been leading an effort to create a fiber optic master plan for the city. The one piece that's in the ground today is this blue line that's along Butler and Huntington. And this operates about 10 traffic signals. The vision is to expand to a much broader reach and go well beyond traffic signals, connecting things like well sites, libraries, the USGS campus. You can see the less fire stations, public work yards. So as part of developing the master plan, then you need to get into the details of what goes into a fiber network. And here's some pictures of some of the things that we have out on Butler Avenue today. This is a splice tray where fiber comes in from the main trunk line and gets spliced into the traffic signal cabinet. And here's a pole box with some fiber optic wrapped up and some more splicing equipment here as well. So fairly technical updates. I'm happy to go into any details of any of these, but we wanted to combine this with street lighting because they're somewhat related. And so that actually was the whole presentation for that section. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions or go into any of that in more detail if you'd like.
Okay, Counsel, any questions about this? Ms. Whelan?
Jeff, can you tell me if we're updating our systems so that bus or transit can begin to put in, and I forget the name, but it's where the signal changes and gives them priority?
We're not actually changing anything to accommodate transit signal priority or TSP because that's already, that technology is in most of our newer cabinets. It certainly will be in these new standards. So that's not, that's not a reason to do these updates. That's kind of already in the newer cabinets that we have in the field.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments on this item. So thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to go ahead and go down to an update on downtown visioning plan.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, this is Greg Clifton. I'm not attempting to kick this one off, but I do think we have some visitors with us to speak to this plan. And I want to make sure they're able to get their thoughts together and have their notes ready for the presentation. And I believe Terry Medexa and her consultant Puma and perhaps others were going to give Counsel just a very brief update on where the visioning plan is. Terry, are you online and able to proceed at this point?
I am. Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counsel. I'm really excited to spend a few minutes with you this evening. Our consultant team is in town for their first site visit. As you know, they've tried to come here twice before, but due to circumstances surrounding COVID, we've had to cancel those trips. This time they were able to make it. They came in yesterday and we had a very full day of meetings today. We will tomorrow and also on Thursday. I would like to invite you tomorrow evening. We'll be set up in the Aspen Alley with the consultant team. You are welcome to join us to interact directly with them. Share some of your thoughts, your ideas, your feedback, which will all be wrapped into this plan. Again, that's Aspen Alley tomorrow from 5:30 until 7:00. I hope to see you. And with that, I'm going to have Brad Siegel, who is the principal with Progressive Urban Management Associates, share a PowerPoint and a brief update with you. Brad, are you ready?
I believe so. Can you hear me, Flagstaff?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Fantastic. Can you see my screen?
Yes. No. I do not see the screen.
We have, I should say, downtown vision and action plan.
Stacy Fobar, do we need to enable the consultant to have access for the computer screen?
He should have it. He is currently as a participant and not an attendee. Brad, are you able to use the open share tray? Is that what you're using to share your screen?
Yeah, I've got open share, I've got the tray. I've got the screen share of desktop.
Okay, you should be able to click the actual presentation rather than your desktop and that might work better.
Okay.
You have it open.
Do you have it?
Sorry, we do not see it at this time. Terry, would it be possible to email it and I could share it?
Stacy, I just sent it to you. You should receive it in a few seconds.
Perfect, thank you.
My apologies, Mayor and Counsel, on our technical difficulties, but I will say the consulting team is delighted to be enjoying the cool air of Flagstaff for the first time on this project. We are thrilled to be in town. We arrived yesterday and two of us from our Denver office are on the ground. Myself, JJ Folsom, I'm Brad Siegel. And we have a third member of our team that's joining us tonight, Chaney Bostick. She's also based in Denver. We spent most of the day today just learning downtown, walking through the nooks, the crannies, really understanding both south side, north side. We've been on the job for about six months since we started working on the downtown plan. This is very unorthodox for us not to be on site until this time in a project. The good news is we've had a great running start. So we've had plenty of time to prepare background materials and come to grips with state of the market. And I see someone got our slides on the screen, so we're good to go. We have a brief, brief, brief update for you tonight on our progress. Next slide, please. And the first thing I wanted to brief you on is we are conducting a community wide survey. So the survey is available to all citizens, residents of Flagstaff. As of today, we have more than 900 community members have responded to our online survey. This online survey will continue to be available for the next couple of weeks. I'll provide a link on that survey in a moment. The survey is seeking perceptions towards downtown and maybe more importantly aspirations. What do we want downtown Flagstaff to be long-term? We're also asking folks about coping with COVID. And the first question that you see on here, more than 500 responses as of late last week, we asked folks how comfortable they would be visiting downtown to attend a variety of activities. Probably no real surprises here, but there's, the green is people are more comfortable. The red is less comfortable. So we're finding the Flagstaff residents are more comfortable visiting stores, outdoor events, work, restaurants, and then to a lesser degree, as you would expect, gyms, indoor events, bars and nightclubs. Next slide, please. We're also asking the citizens, what would be the most important improvement to downtown to achieve their own vision? In the survey, residents will have an opportunity to describe their own vision for downtown and what they would like, how they would like to see it evolve over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. And then we list a list of about a dozen different improvements and we ask people to pick one. And this is intriguing to us always, this question. But as of last week, the number one importance of downtown for residents was maintaining the historic character of the downtown, improving the parking experience. We have certainly heard a lot about parking since we've been working here. And then making downtown more walkable and bikeable. And as Counsel knows, we've been thrilled to be working with Greg and his staff on the outdoor improvements, the temporary outdoor improvements on Aspen Street and Inherited Square. Couple alleys downtown now accessible for uses for restaurants, for stores, and really meeting the dual goals of safely and to try to, try to help businesses while also maintaining public health standards. We've been doing both of those. Next slide, please. The next slides, which I'll get through quickly, are some of the initial building blocks of the downtown plan. Vision elements, what we want downtown to be. So what we've heard primarily from downtown stakeholders, we've had a whole series of Zoom calls and different meetings with downtown stakeholders, seeking a vision for downtown and also priority improvements. So what we're hearing is we want a downtown that's vibrant, walkable, historic, yet also adaptable to new investment, thriving downtown, which is prosperous for the businesses, welcoming and inclusive and accessible to all. Next slide, please. Emerging themes for the plan, these are foundational to the plan as we start to put it together. There are four different categories of themes. On the economy, we're looking at ways that downtown can support primary job growth, how we can encourage housing in downtown, strengthen the storefront economy, which obviously with the COVID disruption is going to be more important than ever, not just long-term, but also in the next 12 to 18 months. So we'll have strategies for both, for both near-term through recovery and then longer-term moving forward. Next slide, please. The experience for downtown, these are The experience for downtown, these are some of the different themes that we're seeing for improving downtown as a destination. So improving public space and activating public spaces, and as I mentioned, maybe a silver lining in the dark cloud of COVID is we have been able to activate some of these spaces downtown on Aspen and vicinity of that area. Cultivating local arts and culture as foundational to downtown. We found a very active, rich arts community here. Managing parking and mobility, so it did pop up in our resident survey, and we've been looking at the work you've done to date on parking management and refining some strategies moving forward. Creating convenient and safe access to transit and enhancing different gateways into the downtown. Next slide, please. The environment of downtown, how do we improve that? So preserving historic character while also finding ways to accommodate new development in downtown. Difficult balance in many communities that we work in and certainly both a challenge and an opportunity in Flagstaff. Improving pedestrian and bicycle connections in and out of downtown and to adjacent neighborhoods. Activating alleys and underutilized spaces. And again, we've had the opportunity just within the past month to experiment with this. And then, as we've heard from many, including many of you on Council, embracing sustainability is a core value in how downtown is managed moving forward. Next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. And then lastly, on emerging themes implementation. So many of these plans will lay out what we want. This plan will go a step or two further and really get into how, how as a community, do we implement many of these ideas? Previous slide, please. Got ahead of ourselves there. So in terms of implementation, can we go backwards one slide? Well, maybe we can't go backwards. In terms of implementation, we are laying out, there we go. Nope. Oh, we're sorry about this, folks. I know it's, I know we've got a long meeting, and all you need is is problems with the presentation. Next slide, please, is a problems with presentation at this point. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right, hold it there. So on implementation, ensuring that we've got maximum collaboration between public and private sectors moving forward. And this plan is sponsored by a variety of agencies, the city, of course, and joined by the county, the, and of course, the Business Alliance. Creating a clear path through regulatory processes. So once we figure out what we want downtown, how do we create more certainty, both for the city and also for investors to help make that happen? And then also empowering and diversifying funding for the Downtown Business Alliance. You have a strong partner in downtown. How do we make them even stronger moving forward? We're just going to be critical on COVID recovery and moving forward. All right, next slide, which I think is our last slide. So next steps, we are going to be meeting with a whole variety of downtown stakeholders over the next couple of days. We're doing this mostly in outdoor spaces, doing this safely, all masked up, and everybody we've been talking to is masked up. But it makes such a difference for us to meet with folks face-to-face and to be on the ground, walking the streets and really immersing ourselves in the experience that is downtown Flagstaff. We'll start putting together a draft plan framework as we get into the fall, and then our target is to deliver the plan after the first of the year. So again, my apologies with the technical problems, but that's where we are. And Mayor, Council, and I guess back to Greg and Terry, I'm happy to answer any questions in terms of the status of the plan.
Counsel, are there any comments? Ms. Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and the update concerning the downtown vision, plan, and action afterwards. And thank you for being a partner with helping our small local businesses there in downtown and try to go forward in the climate of COVID in their business. And I really want to appreciate you and your company for being a partner with the downtown and our local businesses. So thank you.
We're going to go to Mr. Clifton and then Ms. Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I also want to extend some thanks, and I want to single out the fact that our consultant team comprised of a couple of firms traveled a pretty good distance to come visit us in Flagstaff and spend some time with Terry and then sightwalks tomorrow and so forth. I think in the middle of everything that's going on, it's quite commendable to see that level of effort. So thank you very much.
Ms. Wheeler, followed by Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add to the accolades. You know, it feels as though we're in very good hands, and I appreciate your work, not only within the scope, but you've stepped outside of that scope many times to help us in these COVID moments and days. So I just have great appreciation for your willingness to become part of us. We visioned this process. Thank you.
So I accidentally skipped over the Vice Mayor. So we're going to go to the Vice Mayor. Then we're going to come back to Mr. McCarthy.
No worries, Mayor. Just don't ever do that again. I'm just teasing. I wanted to welcome the consultant team to Flagstaff. I'm very grateful that you all are here, and I hope you enjoy your time. I know you're in good company with Terry, and I just wanted to say thank Terry for your efforts in bringing this team to our community to improve our downtown community and effort. And just say that I'm very excited about everything. I don't have any questions or comments at the moment, but I just think that we have a really good plan in place, and I'm very much looking forward to the steps ahead. So welcome, and I appreciate it.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. As I traveled around the country, and also when I worked on my master's degree in land use planning, one thing I learned is that downtowns go in one of two directions. They go downhill and become pretty bad, or they get better. And it's obvious what choice we've taken, and I'm very excited to live in a town where we have a vibrant downtown, and I want to keep it that way, and we'll try to do anything I can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aslan.
Yeah, I just want to add to the mix here and say welcome to Flagstaff. And I hope to be joining you guys tomorrow night at 5:30. That sounds like fun. Aspen Alley, I'll figure out exactly where we're supposed to be meeting, and I look forward to doing a walk-around with you all. And thanks for all the great work. It's very exciting.
Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sending a big grateful, thankful heart to our Downtown Business Alliance and the Downtown Business District, and of course, the and Brad and his team with Puma. I truly believe that our downtown is the heart and soul of Flagstaff. And I believe that has been reflected in the presentation tonight and in the goals that is set so far, whether it's land use, urban design, place-making, and hopefully, multi-model connectivity, and of course, the parking opportunities. I'm glad to be a part of this conversation, and I hope to meet you in person tomorrow. Big thankful hearts to all of you.
So I just want to say that I'm really excited to see where this plan is at and to see how the plan is moving forward. I do appreciate, first of all, the Downtown Business Alliance and Terry Medeska in your vision in coming to the city and asking to partner with this. I also appreciate our consultants that are working on this, because I think you've been able to be really adaptive and flexible and resilient in starting such a planning operation, having COVID in the middle of it and still managing to be out in our community, getting the information that we need, and also responding to what it is that our businesses need, not in the future, but right now, to make sure that our downtown is as vibrant as it can be moving into next next phase. And I truly appreciate that. Downtown is one of our most treasured assets in our community, and being able to understand what is happening currently now, how we can preserve and protect our small businesses, and then what's the next step in rebuilding and being just as strong and stronger, right? Down the line is much appreciated. So I just want to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to, you know, Council at some point adopting a final plan.
So if there is nothing else on this topic, we are going to actually stop and take a break. We are going to take a 10-minute break, so we'll be back at 7:22. And when we come back, we're going to come back and start with item number nine, which is the South Side Community Specific Plan. Thank you.
Sorry, we are set.
Okay, I couldn't remember if I said 7:20 or 7:22, so. 7:22?
Yes.
I think we're good to go, Mayor.
Okay, so we are going to go ahead and turn this over. This would be Ms. Decter and Ms. Harris. We are on item number nine. This is South Side Community Specific Plan and Associate Minor Regional Plan Map and Text Amendment. This would be PZ-20-00001. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am delighted to have this new conversation with you today about the South Side Community Specific Plan. Our schedule for tonight is to have this work session I have. And then next week, we have the public hearing scheduled for adoption of a minor regional plan amendment, and then the South Side Community Specific Plan by resolution. So tonight with me is Deborah Harris, who is the Executive Director of the South Side Community Association. I have been very privileged for the last few years to spend a lot of time with Ms. Harris and to enjoy both her company and her firm sometimes direction on helping this be a successful public outreach effort that generated a community plan that I think really represents what we heard and what we understood from the community. Deb, would you like to introduce yourself any further or make any opening remarks?
I just wanted to say, well, first of all, yes, I would like to make some opening remarks. I just want to say thank you to Council. You know, this was, this would have been a much more difficult task had you all not been so supportive and willing to give Sarah the time that she needed to do a good plan. And there were times when we had to slow down and kind of wait a minute. And I know that there was some pressure for her to get this done, but you all were really good in providing her the time that we needed to make sure that we did the job that we wanted to do. And so I just want to say thank you very much for your patience and for your support.
Thank you, Deb. So I just want to talk through a little about our objectives for the work session tonight. Our work session tonight is going to go over notable goals, policies, strategies, and concepts from the plan. What we are not doing is the things we're going to do at the public hearing next week, which is the review of the application, a review of the public participation process, though we'll go into that a little bit tonight, presenting the staff summary and findings, and then the resolution for adoption. But we'll go over a lot of the content of the plan with this presentation tonight, just so you can get familiar and understand the policies we're presenting and ask questions, and maybe let us know if there's any modifications you'd like us to have, be part of the conversation. So our schedule for public hearings, I'll remind you that this is, these are minor plan amendments, but because they're done with a specific plan, we follow the major plan amendment proceedings or procedures. And so the first was to have two Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. So Planning and Zoning heard this plan on July 8th and again on July 22nd, and they did recommend adoption of this plan at that July 22nd meeting. So this work session is an optional step, but we, there's so much material to go over here. I mean, I think that it's very obvious that this is a lot of work that went into creating a document like this. It actually is even two volumes. We have a volume that focuses on goals and policies, and one that's really about all the drawings and concepts, which are really ideas that came from the neighborhood, which we were so privileged to kind of curate into something as beautiful as the volume two of this document. And then next week, you guys will be gathering again for the same topic, and we'll be going over some slightly different material. But that is when you will do the reads and the resolutions. I can't have a presentation that doesn't have the slide in it, I feel like. But I wanted to remind you, this will be our third specific plan adopted since we originally adopted the Flagstaff Regional Plan in 2014. And so we've moved through these at different paces. But ultimately, as you, earlier tonight, all of these specific plans come up with recommendations that need further implementation. They need zoning code amendments, they need changes to engineering standards, they need funding to proceed. And so what we're doing at this point is laying out that roadmap, but it will take further council action to actually achieve the outcomes we discuss in this specific plan. So the vision of the South Side Community Plan is that the South Side community shall promote sustainable improvements that enhance and embrace our heritage through cultural stewardship, retaining the unique character and cultural fabric and flavor of our neighborhoods. This vision took a while to create, and it really was that first few steps of understanding and listening. I just want to point out about the public participation processes. We listened to the community for a whole year and led discussions and had a lot of conversations around the topics you see in this circle before we wrote a single word of the plan. We've really only been writing this plan for about 16 months. And that listening and really cultivating those conversations and relationships was a very critical part of putting this plan together, because when we began this process, we started with an open house, and only about 35 people came. And of those 35 people, 50% of them did not live in this neighborhood or own a business or property in the neighborhood. We had to sit around and have a hard conversation after that first meeting and say, were the right people in the room? And the answer was clearly, Deb told me the answer was no. She was very clear that we had not done what we needed to do. And I think that was the first time we took a step back, looked at our outreach and said, let's do it again. Let's do it right. Let's find another way. And I think we did that same kind of check-in multiple times throughout the process. And I always through that would look to Deb and say, Deb, did we get it? Did we hear everything? Is there something we're missing? Is someone not in the room? And I think that that back and forth between not only the community association and the city staff, but also for many months along the way, we had Friends of the Rio as a partner in this. They were given an environmental justice grant from the EPA, and we're using that to investigate flooding justice in the South Side and held many, many joint meetings and enriched this conversation greatly. So getting to just these topics, they look like pretty ordinary ones maybe, but they were really in-depth conversations just to arrive here. So this specific plan has 84 policies and lists 114 implementation strategies. It also identifies sub-areas of the South Side that are meant to be a framework for future rezoning efforts and land use policies that may be adopted in the future for this community. Now, I think it's good to say that not all 84 policies are land use policies. Some of them are about the things the neighborhood wanted to talk about. One of the best compliments I got about someone who read the plan, who had never been involved in the process, was they said, it really doesn't sound like the city wrote this. It sounds like the neighborhood wrote this. And that's, to me, a great compliment when we're working on a neighborhood plan. And that's to me a great compliment when we're working on a neighborhood plan. Also, there is not an expectation that 114 implementation strategies are going to manifest themselves overnight. It's, we've talked repeatedly about how to prioritize these, what could go first, what was meaningful? And how to kind of make those trade-offs. So you'll find in the document that even though there's sort of a chapter that is pretty overwhelming with a bulleted list of strategies, the appendix A of volume one has the ones that the neighborhood really wants to prioritize. So I'd like to go through a few of these topics, but I could stop here and see if there are any questions.
I don't see any questions, thank you.
Great. So the first piece of the South Side that's new since the 2005 plan was worked on with the community is there is now a National Register Historic Preservation District for the South Side. This district was adopted by the State Sites Committee in 2011. So the previous South Side Plan really didn't have a lot about historic preservation. There had been some attempts to get this district established that hadn't been successful. And so it didn't really talk about historic preservation or how to do it. And so we not only wanted to talk about all those buildings, but we also wanted to talk about heritage preservation. Really, it's more than just the buildings, but the buildings plus the people plus the culture that make South Side a very, very unique place. So for that purpose, we, there's these hatched areas in the sub-area map. There's so many unique little parts of the South Side, it's not one neighborhood. When we went door to door in the South Side, when you asked people, what was their name? They said, well, it's, or it's block. People, when they, when you live in the South Side in much smaller geographies. And so we had discussed if we could have a historic preservation overlay that covered the entire district. And the answer that we got back, both from the Stakeholder Committee and from the groups that we discussed this with and the property owners was no, these really need to be tailored. So we've taken a different approach for heritage preservation in this neighborhood. Rather than having an overlay like Townsite or Downtown, what we would like to do is work on smaller targeted overlays that bring property owners together for future work on what it means to be part of the historic district in this section of the neighborhood. So that is really one of the key parts of heritage preservation. And I'd like to invite Deb to talk a little bit about a goal that was added through the Planning and Zoning Commission Hearings. This was the condition of their approval was that we add some goals and policies related to human stories and as foundational to the South Side Community. And maybe Deb would like to jump in for a moment and make some remarks about that.
Yeah, this was, this was extremely important to the stakeholder group. You know, so oftentimes we look at buildings and we look at streets and we forget about the people who made those buildings and streets what they were or what they are. You know, when you think about a neighborhood, and I can think about a neighborhood as I was growing up. And I think about the people who lived in those houses. And that's what I remember. And they provided the flavor for the community. So they're responsible for that home feeling that you get, that a lot of people get when they come into South Side. And so the stories were important. And we weren't able to do that exactly the way we wanted to, but we put this goal in there so that we could come back and work on that, so.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions about this before I move on?
I don't see any.
Great. So the next part that I'd like to talk about is the growth and change sub areas. So the South Side has very complicated zoning. It has a community commercial north of Butler primarily, light industrial off to the east, north of Butler. And then south of Butler, it's primarily high density residential. That's pretty simple. But it also has overlaid on it the transect zones. And one of the things we discovered during high occupancy housing planning was that the transect zones had been calibrated only using buildings north of the tracks. This is an example of where as planners, we didn't really get to know the vernacular of the South Side as well as we probably should have at that time. I think there is, because the South Side has such an eclectic feel, there's a lot of recycled materials. It was a working class neighborhood where people worked at the sawmills or the railroad or in farming or sheep herding. So it doesn't have the feel of a refined, middle-class neighborhood like Townsite or North End has. I think we've overlooked some of the charms there that I hope we, this plan has corrected. In addition, a lot of the commercial area in the South Side has a very different shopfront experience than the downtown. And the only buildings looked at for that feel of shopfronts were the downtown ones when the transect zones were put together. So transect zones in the South Side have never felt right, even though they were adopted in this area. We had a lot of really hard conversations about the zoning in the South Side. And so we sort of took a step back and said, well, what should it be? What should it look like? And what we came up with was these four major categories. First, there's the yellow areas that are really the neighborhood core. These are the family parts of the neighborhood where people raise their kids, where people come think of as home. They are not universally, single-family cottages only, but they are primarily that. And there are many different cottages in this area, some of which we may be eventually adding to the district that currently do not show as contributing. Because the district, when it was formed, didn't include an updated inventory. So there's a lot of things about this part of the neighborhood that still needs some exploration and work. The second part of the neighborhood is kind of the area that really is a high-density residential, but has its own unique flavor, which is the live-work neighborhood. The live-work neighborhood regularly has commercial frontages or commercial building types as part of the environment. And some of those are no longer occupied as businesses, some of them are occupied as residences. Some of them are kind of smaller businesses or different businesses, and there's a lot of adaptive reuse in this area. The next part is the South Side Main Streets, which I think are the real part of the community in the South Side that the most of Flagstaff is familiar with. It's the Bieber Street, the, you know, Mike's Pike and San Francisco and Phoenix. And then the last area is the Live Make Center, which is a new idea for the South Side and for the Flagstaff zoning code. One thing that I've learned over the last few years, and I'm not an economic development person overall in terms of my experience, is that there's a kind of a gap in our zoning that doesn't recognize the kind of working places that are emerging throughout the United States. There is a real demand for the kind of locations where somebody can have a blacksmithing shop and live above it. Things like that, those artisanal, maybe closer to light industrial kind of uses do not have a place in Flagstaff per our zoning code where they can mix with residential and commercial. And when you talk to residents of the South Side about their experiences of this place, historically, this is an important thing that's been lost and maybe is fading, that they wanted to see come back. And so that's part of how the Live Make Center was pulled into this plan as an idea for a new zone. So here's a quick view of sort of the experience we'd hope that the Live Make Center could provide. The goal of it would be to provide entrepreneurial craft and manufacturing area with supporting commercial and residential uses. This, this is the area where the neighborhood, as we worked through the topic of where do bigger buildings belong? And should there be large buildings in the South Side? This area felt like the right place for many residents to have density so that we could have density here and preserve it in other places in the neighborhood, be preserving the character and the lower scale of buildings and places. For example, the South Side Main Street, which this is kind of a larger potential building in the South Side Main Street goals. We showed several different illustrations of what new infill could look like. The South Side Main Streets are really one of the places where we want to focus on that adaptive reuse so that we can keep the commercial fabric of the National Register District. But there are plenty of locations where the buildings we have that are commercial in the neighborhood don't fit that fabric either. Those are the ones I think we are, we would hope to see maybe turnover and provide some more housing opportunities. The downtown vision also mentions this as a really critical area because most of the housing in the downtown is in the South Side. The live-work neighborhood, this is a little bit of the character of it. You can see hotels, small old hotels, these are now used residentially. The market on O'Leary Street, other small apartment buildings that maybe people look very single-family home oriented. And then some apartments that are of a little bit bigger scale, especially along major streets like Butler and maybe South San Francisco. But we also want to talk a lot about how having small increases in density and allowing some of these residential frontages to provide commercial, small commercial spaces could be also really relevant to this neighborhood. The neighborhood core is the area we discussed that was in yellow. It's kind of a large area, but these are really, you can look at these and see that there's a lot of single-family appearance at the street. What I'd like to mention is there's actually a lot of density hidden behind some of these homes. Many of these look like a single-family lot from the street, but there's actually three to four units on a very small lot. And the way that was achieved was by building several small, single-story units or about story and a half or two-story units. And then, you know, really, there's not much parking on site. I think that is why this mark, that particular development pattern is part of why this area is considered by WalkScore as the most walkable neighborhood in Flagstaff. That piece of it is really critical. It's been a real challenge to discuss how to manage parking in the South Side for that reason because what people love about the South Side requires less parking. And then the buildings that are newer have had more parking than we would traditionally see, but so many bedrooms that there have been very large impacts. So this was a big back and forth and a long area of conversation associated with the plan. I want to pass this next section to Deb because the loss of park space in the neighborhood was another critical point of discussion. And the Murdoch Center, which Ms. Deb is the director of, has been a big part of this conversation. So Deb, just tell me when you want me to advance slides.
Okay. So here we are with parks. And so as you can see, there's not a whole lot of space in the South Side for parks. All the property that's owned by the city, you know, and hopefully in the next few years, you know, we'll be able to manage something in regards to smaller seating areas. I don't want to call them parks because our definition of a park is, you know, big open spaces, but we don't have that. But we do have some locations where we can put some seating or some, you know, people can maybe throw a ball or walk in a circle or something that would be, that would resemble a park. So go ahead to the next one. Definitely, when the Longtree Overpass happens, hopefully that's going to generate some opportunities to do something under that. And we've looked at, just, you know, kind of dreamed about things that we could do. Everything from an open venue for concerts and things like that to, you know, basketball courts or parks where people can gather and do things. So we have a lot of different ideas and hopefully we're going to be able to have some conversations about that as we get closer to doing whatever it is we do with the overpass whenever that's ready to start having, whenever we're ready to start having those conversations. So we're just kind of waiting. So I always tell people to kind of dream about what this could look like, with the understanding that, you know, you're not going to get everything you want. But at least if we throw it all out there, then we can have some choices. Next, I think. The Murdoch Center is a really big part of the South Side, you know. People drive up and down Butler all the time and they can easily find the Murdoch Center. And all you need to do is tell people it's the building that sits on Butler with the mural on it. And everybody knows exactly what you're talking about. It provides a hub for the community. If you look at our calendar, everything has happened in that building. And I mean, pretty much everything legal. So it really does provide an opportunity to build community. And that's what we're talking about when we talk about keeping the flavor of the South Side, keeping the neighborhood, keeping the heritage. Is that we want a place where people can gather, where they can build community. Because as I so often say, is that if we can put people in spaces where they can come together socially with cultural events and activities and get to know each other personally, one-on-one, then when it's time to have those big, heavy conversations, hopefully we will have gained enough trust that we can have those honest conversations and we can look at what's best for the whole community and not what's best for one. And so the Murdoch Center is definitely that place. And we keep working toward that, that goal is to make it that community space that is so important to the neighborhood and to the community. And not just people that live in the South Side, it's people all over the city use that building and come together in that space. And it's what I would call a sacred space, it's a safe space for people to come together. And so I can't say enough about the need to make sure that that building is a part of the South Side and that it continues to be a part of the South Side. Because people are really, each generation will come to understand how important that space is for building community. So I'm not sure, is there another slide, Sarah?
Nope, I think that's it.
Okay, that's it for me.
Do you, should we pause for questions here? I don't see any questions, so maybe we'll keep going. What were you going to say, Deb? Sorry.
No, I was just going to say that the last thing is that the grounds of the Murdoch Center definitely provide some opportunities for outside spaces that people can use to have those open spaces. So that's an opportunity, not a full-blown five-acre park, but an opportunity to do some outside activities in a smaller area.
Thank you, Deb. I think the next part we would like to highlight is that there are many opportunities to make what is already a very walkable neighborhood of the South Side a more walkable neighborhood and definitely a more bikeable neighborhood. So we spent a lot of time talking through this with residents. The, I think what you'll see is this is, right now, Martin Ince, our multimodal planner, he is working on his active transportation management plan. And these pink lines right here were actually in his plan. But what the neighbors came up with, these are ideas from the South Side, was that they thought once the Rio was complete and there could be some opportunities for pedestrian bridges, that really bike boulevards, which are roads that have bike treatments to make them move more efficiently than traffic, that parallel Butler would be a great asset that the grid of the street could offer to the community. And so the South Side residents had this idea, we brought it back. And I think when Martin gets the active transportation management plan in front of council next year, we've kind of cross-pollinated those two processes based on these great ideas that really are from the neighborhood. We also talked about a crossing, there is a blinking push-button crossing, a hawk, it's called at. It's called at um, Humphreys and Butler. Right here, you can see that's part of this pink line. But between San Francisco Street and Lone Tree, there are no crossings for pedestrians that are not playing Frogger. On Butler Avenue. And in addition, there's an S curve in this part of the road that makes people really uncomfortable crossing without some more visibility. Um, there's also vegetation in the median that makes it a beautiful road and a quieter road for the community. Um, but it doesn't help you if you're trying to get across the street. So we've looked throughout the neighborhood and, and there's really, there's a dot here for a bike, a crossing at O'Leary and Butler. But really what the engineering staff will do is look between the Murdoch Center and about Eldon Street and look for the most safe. And um, reasonable location to put this crossing. So it's not that it's going to be right here where the one is, it's, it's going to be somewhere along here though. We also talked about potential sites for surface lots for a park flag on the south side. There is the current one at the downtown connection center, but we anticipate. That with the expansion of the need for transit services, that some of that parking may need to be relocated. And so that was included of, of where the sites where that could be possible. Um, we also did talk about incomplete streets and sidewalks, and I know that came up earlier in the meeting today in relationship to parking. Um, La Plaza Vieja and Sunnyside have both had um, financing measures to pay for curb gutter and sidewalk. The reason that hasn't happened in the south side is partially because this area north of Butler is light industrial. And it's really, doesn't have much residential character to it, but it probably will in the future. And then the area south of Butler has had the restrictions that come with the flooding associated with the Rio de Flag. Which really kept us from managing the curb gutter, sidewalk, stormwater drainage. In the way we might do it if this were just a local drainage. So. Being able to complete these streets and sidewalks in a cost effective manner is really. An action that is dependent on the completion of the Rio de Flag flood control project. And what you'll find in volume one of the South Side Plan is that we actually took a look at the entire plan. And in appendix B, we discussed the impacts of the Rio de Flag flood control project. And in that section, we talk about the scenario of what if the flood plain is unchanged? And what if the project is completed and the flood plain changes? So if you have questions about that, we tried to lay it out. Um, I know we're on a great path right now to complete this project with the Army Corps of Engineers. But at the time we were working on the plan, it wasn't a certainty. And so we really tried to examine both scenarios thoroughly. Another transportation issue that we went out and did additional public engagement on was the O'Leary Street foots trail. This is a concept that also would rely on completion of the Rio de Flag flood control project. To have a foots trail that goes between the houses that are facing um, Eldon Street. And the ones facing O'Leary Street, south of the O'Leary Street Market and to build a bikeable foots path through this area. They're currently, when we first proposed this idea, some of the residents who live nearby were very opposed. They, their mindset was that adding these features, um, we didn't have drawings like this at the time, but the adding these features. Would um, bring traffic into the neighborhood. Mainly they were concerned between the police station and the O'Leary Street Market, which sells alcohol. Um, that would increase uh, problems for them, nuisances. What we ultimately went out and did was that Carlton Johnson and Mark Revis went door to door throughout this area. And talked to every resident who would open the door for them. Um, we even announced it ahead of time. We sent them a letter and said. We're going to come door to door between this time and this time and this time and this time on these different days. So they knew we'd be around. If they didn't want to talk to us, they could just pretend we'd never knocked on the door. And if they did, they could kind of be prepared. They knew what we were going to talk about and we had sent some ideas about this. Specific topic ahead of time. Um, Mark Revis, our um, our neighborhood planner um, and historic preservation officer is an architect. And he did all these hand drawings. He's, if you can't tell, he's a magnificent um, artist when it comes to showing these kinds of renderings. And was really able to put a sketch pad in his hand and talk people through what it could look like and answer their questions. One thing we really discovered about this, um, which there was, it was kind of, we were kind of on the fence about it for a while. But there are a lot of trespass issues through this area now where people are crossing private property. And taking very unsafe unseen paths through this part of the neighborhood. Opening this up to a legitimate path that is uh, managed and partially lit. We're a dark sky city, so it's not going to be like, you know, Austin, Texas or LA. Um, but you know, to have some low lighting, to offer the ability to use this path to increase the traffic on it. Could really uh, make some of the problems that are there now be diminished. But it would definitely depend on the design. And so what the plan says is that. We should be not only showing this and putting it in the plan, but when we get to design level work on this project. We really are going to have to go back out to the neighborhood again. And we're going to have to work through the iterations of this design with the community. And with these adjacent residents to really make sure we're, we're getting at what the issues are. But after all that outreach, we did take this topic back to the stakeholder group that has been evaluating. All the drafts all on, along the last year. And um, they said they thought this was important enough that we should keep it in the plan, even though I will admit there are still some people. This isn't their favorite idea. They're a little more open minded to it after the walk around and the drawings, but I don't think we have everyone a hundred percent on board. So flooding, of course, we've talked about a few times. It was also a major uh, topic of the South Side Plan discussions. I think it's probably the first six months what we talked about the most. And really it seems very uh, intuitive that the main goal is to resolve these longstanding flooding hazards in the south side. And there are a lot of nuances to that. There are many other positions of it should be beautiful, it should be. It should be done right the first time. It should be, we should leave some water in the channel, we should not. But when it came down to brass tacks, the longstanding residents of the neighborhood said. Those are icing on the cake. What is important is resolving these flooding hazards. And removing the FEMA flood plain from the neighborhood. All the other things are important to some people and maybe there's some disagreements, but if we don't get this fundamental piece of it done. Then we're not, we're doing a great disservice and perpetuating the inequity that this issue has caused over the last thirty or forty years for the community. And then the last thing I want to talk about is public safety goals. Um, public safety came up a lot more in the south side than it has in the previous areas where we worked on neighborhood planning. It is not that the neighborhood is unsafe, but I think the fact that there are bars. Um, in the neighborhood has led to what we called high frequency, low level crime. There's also a shelter in the neighborhood and there is some association between some of this crime. And the clients who need the services of the shelter. Um, we had a few people on those conversations who said, well, what we need is for the shelter to get out of the neighborhood. And then many, but the majority of people in the neighborhood said, we are glad that our neighborhood provides this service. It's important in Flagstaff to have shelters that are centrally located and easy to get to from the bus. Um, and so we still heard even people who live just a block away from the, the shelter that. Even though, yes, it's a source of some of these issues, but it's not one they want to see removed from the community. And there's not a strong pushback against that primarily. But what there is, is a need to have the community be more visible so that the design. Of community spaces doesn't allow people to kind of hide in bushes. Or um, hang out in places that might make passersby feel unsafe. Um, and so we really talked about designing public spaces. So that we were using the co- crime free multi, or, or the crime prevention through environmental design principles. To make them spaces that people will want to hang out and that will encourage community rather than um, conflict. And so I think this is one of the places where we talked about how much to push on. Property maintenance, because a piece of this story is of course, if people have overhanging branches or their yards have um. Maybe some eclectic material, let's call that, in their guards. Um, that comes sometimes lead to an impression or that the neighborhood's not as well kept or that there's theft in the neighborhood. And um, the community members that we spoke to sort of. Had different opinions on this topic, so it was one we really did have to talk about quite a bit. Um, there was the side that said, we really should have a property maintenance ordinance. And that that will clean up parts of the neighborhood, make it easier. And then there were residents who said. I really don't want to see more effort at code compliance in the neighborhood. Um, for fear that neighbors who um, those, the neighborhood gentrifies. Code compliance might be used against the longstanding residents. Um, especially residents who might have limited income or ability to maintain their house. Um, though the city has had an owner occupied uh, rehabilitation program. It's not been able to be used in the south side because the federal program does not allow it to be used in flood plains. And so where in other neighborhoods where flood plains aren't an issue, we have been able to take some of those HUD resources and apply them. Um, that's not been the case for most of the south side. And so there is some deterioration of some of the properties um, as people aged and their income got fixed. Um, there is also, you know, the need to be of assistance. So though we had discussed a property maintenance ordinance, there was not consensus. Um, that that, that enforcement or an enforcement strategy was the way to increase safety and improve the appearance of the neighborhood. Um, and so we had some couple of comments about that that I wanted to address because some of them came in even today. Um, but it just wasn't an area of great consensus. So we took a more um, help people understand. Create sa- public spaces that lend themselves towards safety through their design. And work to make the neighborhood a safer, a more comfortable place for everyone. So that is the content that we wanted to go over tonight. But of course your packet had a lot more information. So we also would be happy to discuss anything else. Um, and I can go to the website or pull up information if that's uh, where we need to go. Deb, would you like to make any closing remarks?
Uh, no, I think uh, the presentation should have covered everything, but you know, I'm here and so I'll be more than happy. To answer any questions that the council might have regarding um, the stakeholder group or. Our, our discussions or our feelings about anything. I think I got to know that group very well and we spent a lot of time bonding. Um, so yes.
Counsel. Comments? Mr. Odegaard.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. And I wanted to say, uh, thank you, Sarah and, and, and thank you, Ms. Harris. Um, for the effort that was put into this. Um. It's really a, a, a very uplifting uh, presentation and story. That you gave the, the council and the community of how this all happened. To get here today. And so I really want to thank you both uh, for this and, and talk about, you know, how the community. I, you know, I think at times have gotten the short end of the stick, you know, concerning the, the Rio. You know, how that was redirected at one time that was uh, very detrimental to the community. And uh, and I'm glad uh, we're making a, a wrong, a right now with the, the flood control project that's happening. And, and that's going to be a huge benefit to the community. And so thank you very much and thank you for addressing the. Uh, the property maintenance uh, uh, comp- portion of it. We did get an email and. And maybe that could be another discussion later. Um, so uh, thank you for the presentation. I, I really enjoyed it.
Uh, we have Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, um, thank you, Ms. Deb, and thank you so much, uh, Sarah. What a team effort. And you know, I was able to witness a few of the stakeholders meetings and. The initial talks and this is, this is just the way it should be done. And uh, I'm so proud of this effort. And I'm so proud that we're listening to the community. So um, thank you again. Excellent plan.
Ms. McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say, uh, amazing work done, Deb and Sarah and, and the rest of the team. I know you're only two out of the big team. And that includes the public, obviously. I've probably never seen a plan that had so much uh, interaction with the public. And which makes a better plan. Um, I'll have to say in the almost two decades I've lived here. I don't live in the south side, but I probably spent more time there than any other part of the city, even more than downtown. You know, everything from uh, coffee shops to restaurants to taking guitar lessons and, and, and everything. I just, it's one of my favorite parts of town and it has a real character that I can really relate to. And you know, I think it's great that you're going to try to keep that character, but not be sticks in the mud. In other words, I think some of the ideas about the live work up uh, north and east. Uh, those are probably really good ideas and I would like to see that come to fruition. So anyway, a pat on the back to you guys. Thank you.
Vice Mayor followed by uh, Mr. Aslan.
Yeah, I'll just jump on board and say also just gratitude, Sarah and Deb and, and the entire community who worked on this, the whole neighborhood. I think y'all did a really stellar job on this and very, very pleased and proud reading over this document. Um, especially grateful for the bicycle emphasises that were pointed out. Um, and um, I think it's a great plan, I really do. And I look forward to seeing some of these ideas get implemented in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan.
Dude, Sarah, Ms. Deb Harris, everybody, this is really amazing. Congratulations, great job. Um, like we just discussed with our dark sky stuff, I see a lot of innovation in leadership here and trailblazing and. Um, I, I hope this wins lots of awards. I hope you guys are uh, advertising it and um, tooting your horn a little bit. Uh, I very much look forward to voting on this and seeing things move forward. Thank you for so much hard work. I, I, I can only even begin to imagine. Um, as a community organizer of ten years, uh, it's, 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 it takes a lot of um, elbow grease. To get out there and get people engaged sometimes. And when it works, it can be electrifying and this is really exciting.
Ms. Solis.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Sending big thankful hearts to Ms. Harris and Southside Neighborhood. And Team Flagstaff and everyone in the community who um. Participated and uh, contributed in, in putting this um, plan together. So this is a, a remarkable and exemplary model on how. Comprehensive neighborhood planning should look like. You know, from, from the very beginning, it has always been about the people. About the history. Of south side. So it's developed by the people, for the people and will serve the people. Now and the future of this neighborhood. I'm so excited. Thank you.
So I just want to weigh in. Um, and first of all, I want to start by saying thank you to Ms. Decter and thank you to Ms. Deb. Um, for taking the lead on this South Side Plan. I want to mention that this plan is already an award winning plan. Um, because the South Side Plan has received a national award for the public engagement process. And how they engage the community in the plan. It's my understanding that um, not only um, was this award uh, national. But the individuals have submitted it for an international award. And perhaps when we get done, Ms. Decter can speak more to the group and to the award that she and Ms. Deb and the project has received. Um, just a few things that I think is extremely important is first and foremost, um, this plan included everybody in our community. But its soul and its heart was determined by the people who live in that neighborhood. I think that's pretty important because we just had a conversation earlier um, that I think speaks to that. The need to have the people who live in that community um, really shape and frame the heart and soul of the discussion and of their neighborhood. But then look how gladly they allowed outside voices to help. But then look how gladly they allowed outside voices to help come in and help shape what it would look like. I think that is really the point I was trying to make earlier and the point that this plan should clearly shows. I think it's awesome to see a plan that talks about historic preservation, not just with buildings, not just with roads, but to the actual people that live in that neighborhood. You know, one of the things that I think that we as a community, and I mean the community of Flagstaff, really need to consider, we have such a beautiful community. Um, and part of that beauty are not just the peaks and not just the trees and not just our open space, but the people that actually live here helps to create that sense of beauty and make it balanced and well-rounded. And I think for us to start speaking about um heritage preservation and including the people, I think that that is a novel idea and I think it's an important idea. And I think it's an idea that has long since um come. I want to add that the Rio de Flag is a critical element of this plan. You know, the Rio de Flag is not just about, you know, removing a neighborhood um and addressing a social issue, a social justice issue um that was created. But it's also about beautifications. It's about sidewalks. It's about needed infrastructure. And it's about safety. At least it is for this neighborhood. So I think that that's an important concept for us to look at. I want to mention that the area that's next to Murdoch, the Murdoch Center, um, that was created when Butler was widened. And there was actually a road, that particular road, Brandon, um dumped out into Butler. Well, because it was deemed unsafe because of that curve, it was made into like this quasi pocket space that quite frankly has people sleeping under bushes. And so I really hope and I'm happy to see that we have talked about gathering spaces or social spaces. And that's a space that I think is currently underutilized and could be much better utilized. Um, and lastly, I want to talk about this PMO issue. So this PMO issue is longstanding and the League of Neighborhoods attempted to address it in 2012, I believe it was. The League of Neighborhoods is Plazveja, South Side and Sunnyside. And they had asked all the candidates that were running that year to support a property maintenance ordinance. And everybody said yes, but when it came to council, um, there was six no's and one yes to that. And one of the things, though, that that council had promised is that we would look at the current um ordinances and rules that we had on place, in place. And we would ensure that or we were insured, we told the neighborhoods that there was enough ordinances and things in our current and currently in place to address some of these issues and that we would make sure that um those were addressed. I think what you see when you see emails um from a neighborhood members or people who are part of that saying, hey, this should be included. I think that there should be a line that says, we support that. Because quite frankly, I'm not sure that the neighborhoods really think that the commitment that that council made is actually being upheld, especially when you go drive through these neighborhoods and you see what's happening. Um, this is not about going into people's homes and looking at wiring, but it is about making sure that um the property values of the people that live in those neighborhoods are not um downgraded um simply because of other people's actions. We all have personal property rights, but our personal property rights end at our property, right? And should not be negatively impacting other people. Kind of like that saying goes, that your personal uh rights ends at somebody else's nose. So those are just some of my thoughts with regards to this plan. I'm very, very excited about this plan. I think it's a plan that's long overdue. I look forward to plans such as this in other neighborhoods in our community. I'm thinking about South Side. I'm ta- thinking about Mobile Haven. I'm thinking about Lower and Upper Greenlaw. You know, older historic neighborhoods in our town that need to have these types of planning documents to help assist um in in what they are doing in those neighborhoods. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Ms. um Decter. And if you could talk about this award you all won, I think it's important for council to know about it.
Uh, Mayor, oh, Mayor Evans, Deborah Harris.
Yes, Ms. Deb.
I was just wondering, before Sarah starts, can I just make one other little statement?
Yeah.
I just want to uh let the council know that um, and this is a little personal. Uh, when I first moved to Flagstaff, I lived on campus and I lived in the South Side. And it was a community that I found um was a neighborhood. And when I went to look for a home to purchase, I wasn't able to purchase in the South Side because I could not afford to fix up the houses that were available at that time. But at this point in time, I can tell you, I live in Ponderosa Trails and I would gladly, gladly give up my house to live in the South Side. Uh, when I went over and retired um from NAU three years ago and started volunteering full-time, the community opened their arms and welcomed me in. And I don't think that that happens everywhere else in our community, maybe, but not my experience. And so I would just encourage you that when you're looking at neighborhoods and especially older neighborhoods like South Side, um, think about the people who have such an affinity toward those neighborhoods. There are people that have moved out of South Side, but they still call South Side home. Uh, and that is so important to the work that we're doing in that community. And it can be a model across the country for other communities like it. Um, and like I said, I just want to thank you all for your patience and for your diligence and for your support because without you, this would have never happened. So the award that Ms. Decter is going to talk about in a minute belongs to all of you and you should take a lot of pride in that award because you helped us to gain that award or to win that award. So thank you again very, very much. And I'm done, Sarah. Your turn.
Thank you, Deb. Um, so before we jump into the award, I just, I, there was something I had been meaning to point out. I want to go back to because if you look at volume one of the plan, there's two pages that is page sixty-two and sixty-three, and it's all about South Side Plan contributors. And you, what you'll see is there is a long list of council, commission, partners, staff, um, professional consultants from several different um consulting firms that helped with little parts of this. And then on page sixty-three, you see the names of many South Side residents who attended public meetings. We had lots of residents who said they didn't want to sign in or didn't want to put their name down, and that was fine. Um, but I hope that when people look at this list in particular on page sixty-three, that they recognize someone who lives on their street, on their block, um, who came to the process and brought, you know, many of these people didn't just come with their own ideas. They took the time to go talk to their neighbors and basically provide, uh, they were basically my unpaid informants. They would tell me what their neighbors thought and they would tell their neighbors what I said at meetings and then it would go round and round. But I really appreciated each, each person's effort to make sure that that communication was coming from a trusted voice um and that they could encourage each other to to um listen to each other and to those who value the South Side as well as to some of the limitations of what staff um was trying to be able to help everyone understand. Um, there have been many decades of misunderstandings in the South Side and I hope we were able to clear many of them up. Um, so Mayor Evans asked me to speak that there, there is an award that has not yet been announced publicly, um, but will be announced on September thirtieth. Um, that will come from a national organization for this plan. And it is, it is an award for Project of the Year. And um, that award does mean that it, the plan has been, the public respiration portion of this plan has been sent to an international jury and we'll know sometime in December how we fared at the international awards. Um, I probably can't say more than that yet. So I think, I think that's the sum I can give you until the thirtieth. But if, if uh the members of the media who maybe are following along are interested, I'll make sure that Jessica Drum sends that out so they can um write up stories and and help advertise what a great uh effort this has been. Um, it's certainly been my pleasure. I mean, I don't have, I can't have a favorite neighborhood plan because I, I care so much to to spend the time that we have um with the residents. And I really appreciate everyone in the South Side who um opened their doors to the many team members um who were part of pulling this together. Um, we were, it was all better for everyone's ideas and time and contributions.
Well, I think that we have given direction or given our remarks and again, thank you. And we will go to our next item. So this is item number twelve. This is uh Streets and Sweeping Operations Discussion.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Scott Overton in Public Works Streets Section. And my presentation should be up. Is that correct?
It is. I see it.
All right. Thank you. Well, good evening again. And um, as uh you always know, um, if there's any comments or concerns, I cannot see the chat box. So if you could help me out in that regard, we'll get started right away. So this presentation is uh brought to you by Public Works Streets tonight. And this was a fair request of council a number of months ago. Uh, we're finally up on the agenda, but the, the original question was to have a discussion of potential strategies for cleaning up cinders in a more timely and efficient manner. So this evening, we have a short presentation about our sweeping program and an overview of what we're doing today and uh some of the things we've done in the last couple of years to make some revisions to that program. And then towards the end, we'll have a review of a couple of alternative products and methods for you to consider um and have some further dialogue about. So for a quick refresher, and all of you know this information, I've heard me say it a number of times. Uh, within the city of Flagstaff, there's approximately seven hundred lane miles of transportation infrastructure. Uh, a travel lane uh will be where your vehicle will travel in either direction. It could also be a center turn lane. Adjacent to the transportation travel lanes, oftentimes we have adjacent bike and pedestrian facilities. We, of course, have major intersections and medians. Sometimes they are raised, sometimes they are not. And of course, we have main routes and residential streets. I would also like to bring up that we have ADOT Right-of-Way that runs through the community. And actually, through a mechanism in an IGA, we also provide sweeping services for ADOT on Humphreys, Milton, West Sixty-Six and Sixty-Six through the community. And that's as time allows. We do not get onto the freeways uh unless requested, maybe for an accident or something that's unusual. But general sweeping uh does land on our plate as ADOT does not have sweeping ability in the community. Um, in addition to sweeping those travel lanes and all that infrastructure, we also respond to vehicle accidents. And then we have a pretty important role in post-storm cleanup, and I'll speak more to that. Of course, monsoon win- and winter events are two major uh post-storm cleanup activities. So year-round, we find that a street sweeper will work the community, um, picking up general litter, dirt and debris. In the summer months, we see more activity with monsoon storms uh leaving maybe dirt and debris in the roadway. Um, sometimes it'll flood out or it'll wash into an area and we have to respond. We also see increased litter in the summer months. In the fall, our sweeping program sees more pine needles and foliage. Um, that's a pretty large consideration as we talk a little bit more about bin capacity a little bit further in this presentation. In the wintertime, of course, one of our major focuses is ice cinder cleanup uh from our snow operations activities. And then in the springtime, we have a large post-winter cleanup. Uh, we see much more wind blowing trash. And then we have to assist our striping and marking program as we make preparations in the roadways. So this is your general sweeper. Uh, I think you've all seen these on the roadways. We have three dedicated operators that serve this program. Two of them, George and Leonard, they work our night graveyard shift. They come in at ten PM and they sweep until eight AM every day, four days a week for their work week. Uh, and then um, we have a daytime sweeping operator. And he is responsible for neighborhoods and areas where it needs to be a little more quiet. But our overnight operators will work the mains, the arterials, major intersections, areas where we don't have a lot of residents. And then our daytime operator, Johnny, will go more into the detailed neighborhoods and a little more finer work around residential properties uh to where he doesn't disrupt those neighbors. So those three operators, using this piece of equipment, they each have their own, um, will cover all of those roadways, miles, neighborhoods and areas each and every day. Our program goals generally are, and these aren't always held to, but they're kind of our goal that we try to strive for. Uh, we always try to sweep all mains every week. Um, that's again done in the overnight hours by George and Leonard. We will sweep downtown at least three nights a week. It obviously has more foot traffic. Uh, we see more visitor activity, more tourist activity. Uh, we do have a lot of litter downtown we try to get to. So we try to sweep that more often and that is at least three times a week, again, in the overnight hours. Uh, less cars, less parking helps us get that done. And then we try to set a goal of sweeping residuals at least once a month. We address intersections, bike and pedestrian infrastructure after winter events and as a priority every spring. This is a little bit of a nuance. Um, as a lot of you know, that uh we have ice cinders that we use for traction control all winter. Uh, we have changed our program up a little bit and we now sweep year-round. And we try to address some of these infrastructure pieces in between storms. Um, but oftentimes uh that becomes a priority um only when we can do that outside of those winter events. And then, of course, every spring, uh, we have a lot of cleanup to do from the winter activities. And then, of course, we need to respond timely to accidents and spills. And those are pretty much seven days a week as needed um and as requested by our police department or fire department or other agencies. So we do get some common questions. Um, one that I get often is, do we have year-round sweeping? And the answer is yes, as conditions allow. And what I mean by that is when there are snow events or we have um weather conditions that do not allow sweeping, we do not perform those activities, but the minute that we can start performing them, we will begin sweeping activities once again. Mains and residuals, as I said, yes, we do both. We do the mains at night and we do the residuals in the daytime. Um, do we work during winter storm events? Uh, yes. Oftentimes, a winter storm event will be plowed within a couple, three, maybe four days. And then the following days, we might even have some ice control. But as soon as that ice starts to subcede and we start to see uh cinders show up on the roadway, we get out there as quickly as possible in between storm events um as time allows. Uh, we will see a backup if we have winter events stacked on top of each other. We often cannot sweep as quickly as we'd like to, but our goal is to get out in between every storm and pick up those ice cinders, which really helps us come springtime. We don't have a massive workload. We can just kind of keep up on it. Uh, but that is very um dependent on the weather conditions. Uh, so that's one of our limits of the sweeping, the weather conditions themselves. Um, if it's icy and conditions do not allow for sweeping, if it's very, very cold, we do not do it. Um, but uh most times, we can do it year-round. Something that we've spent a fair amount of time talking about and working through the CCR process with you is the hopper size. Um, we did a calculation recently where we had large cinder trucks and we have a calculation done where we might use eight cinder trucks on a snow shift. They each haul eight yards of material. They might haul three loads a piece per evening. So you might see twenty-four to twenty-six loads of ice cinder spread among the community. Uh, the hopper size on a sweeper is about a yard and a half. So it would take about twenty-six loads from a sweeper to make up for the trucks that run the shifts for one snow shift in an evening hour. Um, so obviously, these limitations don't allow us to pick up cinders as quickly as we'd like to. Uh, the plow trucks are just more efficient as putting them out. And then dump site location is another limitation. We have an east side and a west side dump location, uh, but there's some travel time leaving areas and getting to those dump sites and then getting back to a sweeping area. So some things we've done in the last couple of years that I think uh have become proactive efforts and they're ongoing and we're going to continue these. Um, I've been a big proponent of using electronic control um for the primary um deployment of ice cinders. You'll see that um we try to use them where they need to be used. We try to use them in a, in a manner that does not waste the product. Not only does it save us money in ice cinders, but it also allows us to not put as much down. So I want to continue that electronic control. All of our equipment is outfitted with that type of control device. Uh, we continue operator education. Uh, we do this every fall. We'll do it with our temp operators and our permanent operators. Uh, we want to make sure we're putting down the correct amount of ice cinders uh and putting them in the correct areas as well. We try to only address ponding water and icy trouble spots if needed with cinders, uh, not just setting it down the roadway. We try to put it at intersections and areas where we know we have trouble, but really thinking about where we put the cinders in the first place. And then we'll continue proactive sweeping after all of our winter events. Uh, some alternatives to consider, this was the slide you're really getting to, what can we do to do things differently or better? In two thousand and seven, uh, we had implemented a chemical de-icing and pre-treatment program. ADOT does use chemical de-icing as their primary uh source of winter control and winter storm response. Uh, we did try that in two thousand and seven for two seasons. And then due to some uh community feedback and some uh results and some values that we had to trade, uh, it was dis- it was discontinued shortly after the last recession in 2009. There are some trade-offs with this type of a program. We're certainly welcome to discuss this at a future time with you, if that's a route you think you'd like to go. It has gotten better in 10 years. But I will tell you, there are definitely some trade-offs, environmental ones being one of the more primary. And then, of course, adding additional sweeping resources of equipment and operator is always something to consider as that allows us to hit these spots more quickly. But I will also preface that with, we live within the HERF fund, and that's the Highway User Revenue Funds. And even with the downfall of COVID, we are seeing some impacts to that program. So that just may not be the easiest of options. With that, that generally concludes my presentation. I do have a follow-up presentation coming in late October about winter operations. And we're going to discuss some of the impacts of our budget, shortfalls, the COVID effects, and how we're planning and preparing for this upcoming winter season. But tonight, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments specifically about our sweeping program.
Counsel? Nothing? There we go. Ms. Whelan followed by Mr. Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Overton. It's good to see you. And I'm wondering if you have an idea on the budget expense for just the sweeping program?
Boy, I ran those calculations too. Councilmember Whelan, I will get back to you on the exact costs. It is a capital-intensive program. We recently made some expenditure purchases of new sweepers. They have been welcome, and they are great sweepers, and they're doing a great job. Primarily, we have operating expenses of employees, labor, and fuel. But I will get you that exact cost of the program expense for the course of a year in the next couple of days.
Thank you, and I'm glad you and your staff are enjoying those new vehicles.
Yeah, they are high-performing machines, and they are doing very well. So we've had great results, and we've appreciated that capital support.
Well-deserved. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Scott. I just wanted to really quickly chime in, and thank you for your presentation and how thorough it was. I know I'm one of the councilmembers who's been concerned about getting cinders up off the streets. It's been going pretty well this year, and I know how difficult it can be logistically. And as a big capital expense, and I appreciate all your hard work. And please pass along our gratitude to all your team members as well.
I will. Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Scott. You know, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to express gratitude to you and your team for your hard work during last year's winter and really working hard to keep those roads clean and the bike lanes clean. And I look forward to our upcoming conversation on this topic in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Overton.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
We're now down to item number 13. This is a discussion about restate that the city of Flagstaff is a golden rule city by pleasuring Resolution 2008-68 or updating the resolution to the council wishes. I believe this came forward as a fair. I want to say the fair was from Mr. Odegaard, possibly?
Yes, Mayor, and that was from me. And so I guess I guess I'll speak on it for just a moment. That this resolution that's in your agenda packet that was done in 2008 by that city council at the time, and it was signed by Mayor Sarah Pressler. I just thought, you know, with the diversity of our community as we have it, that I would hoping that we, as a council body, would restate it. And I think now is the time that's good as any of doing that, especially with some of the noise and some of the injustices that we see happening nationwide. And for my vision for this restatement of the golden rule would be for every council member and mayor be participatory in the writing of it. And then it would be we, as a council body, stating that we are as a golden rule city for the city of Flagstaff. So that was my thought on this. I thought it was important that we restate it, and we restate it as a council body with our input. And so I guess we'll all see if there's interest and from the other council body. And then maybe Jason, our admin assistant, could help us to get the collaboration from everyone on the council to put something together. So that's my thought. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. McCarthy. Then I have a comment. Ms. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Odegaard. I actually really like your idea of saying that maybe we should restate it and have council members have their input. I did have some very minor edits that I would not waste time on right now, but I am supportive. And I just had an idea. Instead of just having the mayor sign it, I think every council member should sign it.
I like that idea.
I like that idea. Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
So I just want to add a couple of points to it. So, you know, in 2003, the state of Arizona declared itself a golden rule state, right? And in November 2008, the Flagstaff City Council passed a resolution, it was passed 7-0, designating the city of Flagstaff as a golden rule city. I was part of that council in 2008 that did that. And the conversation that council had in 2008 was, it's going to take more than just us passing a resolution. There needs to be some deliberate action toward that. I do think it's a great idea for council to restate it. I think if each council member wanted to weigh in and tweak the resolution in the way that they need to tweak it, I think it's an awesome idea that every member of council sign that. But then I would also encourage council to try to come up with ways. And this is not something that we push back off on staff to do, to be very clear, right? But how are we as individuals furthering the concept of a golden rule city, either as council members and in our own personal lives? And then I also think it's a conversation with the community about what does a golden rule city look like? And what actions, not only does the government take, but what actions do we as individuals take to further that purpose? Also, the Interfaith Council and the Interfaith groups, our group, were very instrumental when there was a resurgence of the golden rule state idea, I believe it was in 2012. So I would just encourage council members to go and Google it. The information's all there. Arizona itself is supposed to be a golden rule state. And just really think about how we would, how we would further the purpose of it, rather than just stating another proclamation or resolution, and then it just being on paper. Mr. Aslan?
Hello?
I don't have a comment, Mayor. I was just wondering if I can use a really thick Sharpie to sign it with.
Oh, there we go. So I think that staff is just looking for direction from council. Is council in agreement that we want to move forward in restating this and updating the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Alice.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it looks like there's definitely movement forward. Is that all you need, City Manager?
Yes.
Okay, great. We are now down to, we are now down to item number 14. Item number 14 is public participation. Public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. City Clerk, do we have public participation tonight? There is no public participation. Thank you. We're now down to item number 15. This is informational items to and from the mayor, council, city manager, future agenda item request. We are going to start tonight. I believe I started with the Vice Mayor last time. Let's start with Mr. Aslan this time.
You know, Mayor, I don't have anything tonight, except that I did want to ask if the city manager could comment on something that we're becoming aware of, a new drilling permit being processed through ADQ about, what is it, 80 miles east of Red Gap Ranch? I think this might come up, and wondering if we can get an update on it and just know where things are at.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. If you would like to have that discussion briefly now, we can. I intended to bring it up at some point during this to and from. I'm at your pleasure.
I'm not sure that we can have a discussion. I think what it is that when we get to your part, if you could give us an update as to what is happening. The reason why I say we can't have a discussion back and forth with council is because it hasn't been agendaized, unless the city attorney says differently.
We can wait for it to come around to me, and we'll chat about it, and we'll take a look at a potential letter to go out, which could be ratified at a future meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's fine with me, too. I have no other-
Council, thank you. I'm sorry. I was struggling with the mute button. This is Sterling. I just wanted to make sure. Mayor, you're on the right track there, and Greg, you're on the right track as well as far as moving, you know, to an update to the council at that portion where you have a discussion or where you have a report to give. And I'm happy you're good with that, too, Councilmember Aslan. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Aslan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, let's go to Councilmember McCarthy.
Get my mute button off. Just real quickly on that Red Gap Ranch water and the drilling that could compromise the quality of our water. I think that needs to be done pretty quickly, from what I understand, as far as the deadlines. So let's do that as fast as we can. I really don't have anything else tonight. I'm not going to ask for any future agenda items other than the one we kind of just talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odegaard.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, and thank you for everyone. It was a big, heavy lift tonight with very important agenda topics tonight. So thank you.
Let's go to Ms. Alice.
Nothing for tonight, except for a big thankful hearts for everyone.
Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things. I'm not sure this is directed, I believe, to city manager. Greg, we seem to be getting a few more emails about a service that would track the use of our short-term rentals in order to make sure their license and things like that. My question is, are we looking into those? Do they work? So that's one question. I would like to bring forth a fair item. I know, I think it was two years ago, maybe three, we were faced with a decision to have a discussion about changing the administrative decision to renew reclaim water contracts outside of the city limits to a council decision. I would like to see that discussion come back and that this council, if possible, have that discussion. The other fair item is a property maintenance item that... I'm sorry, what, Mayor?
Sorry, I'm moving things. I apologize.
That's okay. I did have some questions earlier. Staff was willing to to respond to that. And I need to agree that I don't believe that our codes are hearing or answering to the voices of our community. And I believe that during the last discussion, perhaps the property maintenance got too far in the weeds. But what I hear from the different community organizations are things like couches in alleys and trash out on the sidewalks and et cetera. And I do understand that we have Title VI of the city code and Title VII, but I just don't think it's meeting our community's needs. So I would like to have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have much to add either or report on. The only things I wanted to bring up where maybe, City Manager, maybe next week when we talk about COVID, it'd be great if there was a way to get an update from FUSD in regards to their sports and extracurricular activities that are occurring that we discussed briefly last week, and just can update on what is happening on the ground. It was fairly troubling to learn about that last week, and I'm just curious if we can integrate that into our upcoming agenda next week. Along with, it'd be great to have maybe Valeria Chase, our NAU liaison, or someone from NAU in partnership with her, give an update along, in regards to COVID as well, and how things are being handled, and an update in regards to student population here in Flagstaff. And that is all. I just want to express gratitude to Councilmember Aslan for bringing up the topic of drilling and that topic. And I look forward to City Manager's response. Thank you.
City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. In no particular order, I'd like to respond briefly to the inquiry by Councilmember Whelan with respect to the short-term rentals. Yeah, I'm seeing the same number of emails coming in about that. Most of what I am seeing are appear to be solicitations by third-party service providers that have software or monitoring services and programs that benefit municipalities. Council, we carried the budget item over for an STR inventory and monitoring service from the last fiscal year to the current fiscal year. And then even prior to the current fiscal year, we put out a, an RFP through our procurement folks in tandem with some other staff. And we're successful in receiving some responses to that. A number of us were on a team reviewing those responses and conducting some interviews. And out of that process came a successful candidate that is now providing service to the Flagstaff community. And as planned at the outset, the initial part of this process is all about database building and inventory. That's where we need to start. The process is to get a firm grasp of what we have in our community and is, of course, a rapidly evolving industry and something that has not been easy to keep tabs on. And that is exactly what we are doing now. So as time marches on, we will see the inventory evolve a little bit more into monitoring and measures taken by the community consistent with what authorities we do have to make sure that things are happening correctly. And so that is in process, Councilmember, and I thank you for bringing that up. And we will be reporting back to you as to the progress of that, but it is very much a work in progress. Uh, if I may, Madam Mayor, I will uh, now address the uh, issue that we wanted to with respect to. Uh, some drilling. This is a, a permit for helium drilling within the Holbrook Basin. Uh, and as noted, this is quite a ways away from the Red Gap Ranch property, uh, but nevertheless has uh, sparked some interest. Um. And we at the staff level, I know this is not an agenda item, so everything that's presenting, being presented to you right now is, is something that would be subject to. Future ratification. We'll bring it, this back to you at the next meeting very likely. Uh, as also has been noted, uh, the window is closing on the public comment period for the permit for this drilling. Uh, that comment period is currently open and will be open for a few more days. The time is upon us. If there's a desire by council to send a letter, uh, we would need to do so quickly. Uh, Mr. Dilly has sent to you by email this evening a copy of a letter that you should have. Uh, and just for your convenience, I am glad to pull it up on my screen because it's a very short letter. Um, and uh, one that uh, we can walk through uh, pretty quickly. And then again, uh, going back to the advisements by our city attorney. The idea here is to just chat about this tonight, uh, get some informal direction from council. Uh, on this and then uh, we will slate it for uh, ratification either through a consent item or something similar to that at a future meeting. Uh, the author of the letter that you now have in front of you and it's a one pager and I'm going to try to scroll very slowly so you can read it if you're looking at it for the first time. Um, the author is Aaron Young, although I think this is a collaborative effort involving water services and specifically Aaron Young. As well as our legal counsel, as well as our water legal counsel and perhaps others. Um, so it's only a one pager, but it's uh, been in front of a lot of eyes. And Aaron Young, if you are with us during the meeting, uh, if it's appropriate, I would love to hear your comments. Since you were able to help with this letter and I will continue to scroll through the letter.
Yeah, hi Greg, this is um, Aaron Young and hello, Council. I am here. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to address them.
Great, and thank you, Aaron. And I'm walking council through the letter right now. I don't know if you uh, would like to summarize any of the salient. Talking points. I am scrolling through the letter and council can obviously read it, but if there's any narrative you'd like to provide, that would be great.
I guess uh. Uh, City Manager, um, Clifton, I, really, the, the letter is, is short and focused on what we determined to be. A lack of regulation or accountability um, for a substantially sized project. That is a separate issue from the distance, um, which is addressed in a council communication report that should be released shortly. So the focus of the letter is purely um, regarding uh, this. Accountability that we feel the Department of Environmental Quality should employ on. Uh, this company or any company that applies for operations like this. I hope that is helpful.
It is helpful and thank you and forgive me for putting you on the spot, but uh, you walked us through that nicely. I think uh, at the end of this, uh, the, the letter very succinctly points out some of the. Uh, perhaps vagueness or as uh, Aaron pointed out, areas where there might be a question of accountability. Uh, with respect to this permitting, uh, and then at the very end, um, as noted, uh. We, you know, uh, it leaves those uh, with water supply interests which, which would include us. City of Flagstaff uh, and our neighbors concerned with the vagueness of regulation and the inability to access information and, and monitor projects. That's the essence of the stated concerns by the city going to this uh, permit again during the public comment period. Uh, if council is desirous of moving forward, uh, and again, this is not an action item tonight. Uh, it can just be an informal uh, nod of the heads. Uh, or the thumbs up or whatever you would like to do. We can uh, launch this letter tomorrow and then it'll come back to you for future action.
Okay, so before council gets started, I want to be very clear. Because this has not been agendized, we are not here to have a conversation about the letter. What we're looking for, the city manager is looking for is a simple, yes, you're interested in having this letter placed on the agenda next week for ratification. If you have any wordsmithing, commas, that kind of stuff in the letter, then those types of things would need to go directly to the city manager. Um, at um, you know, at your own leisure, but we're not here to get into the, the, the talking back and forth and having chit chat. Cause it's not been agendized. So I see, Mr. McCarthy, you have a comment?
Well, I do. Uh, first of all, I am supportive of moving forward and uh, I did have one thing that I think the letter is missing. I guess I should give that to the city manager privately. Is that correct?
You should give that, yes, you should give that to the city manager privately.
I will do that. I will write you an email tonight.
I'll be looking forward. Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Odegaard, can you verbally say yes or no?
Uh, yes, Mayor.
Ms. Whelan, same thing?
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Solis?
Solis, thumbs up.
Mr. Aslan?
I am verbally able to confirm yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a definite yes. Uh, Mr. Clifton, was there anything else for your report?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and thank you for that informal uh, dire- direction. And again, this will come back to you as a council, pardon me, as an action item at your next council meeting and that's all I have. I do want to thank council for uh, uh, getting us through a very busy agenda. You had a lot of uh, heavy lift today and this evening by my uh, clock. I think you've been at it for about eight hours. Uh, so I want to commend you for uh, giving us your full attention on all these agenda items and having very thoughtful discussion. Thank you.
Um, and so from my to and from tonight, I would like to ask for an executive session um, for next week. Um, because I do have uh, two very specific questions. Um, that has to do with water, Red Gap Ranch and seismic testing and contracts. So um, I would like to have that um, e-session next week. Um, cause I think it all relates to uh, this particular ratification. And I could reach out to legal and be more clear.
Oh, you bet. I was just gonna say, if you want to get me those questions and we can call the e-session for next week, not a problem at all.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I'd like to just go ahead and do a shout out for our, I believe it's our streets department. Um, so over the weekend, I had the opportunity to go out in the rain. Um, and just really check out the uh, museum fire flood area, our suspected flood area. You know, drive the, drive the um, path and look at the culverts and talk to residents. Um, noticed that the, the covert at Dortha between First and Main uh, looked like it was getting kind of full. And that has been taken care of. It was taken care of quickly. So um, I want to say thank you to Ms. Anderson. Um, who spearheaded that and thank you to the, the staff members that went out and cleaned it and put a new lock on that gate. Um, it was very much appreciated by the residents in Sunnyside. So thank you. Stormwater, I want to do a shout out for Stormwater. It's Stormwater that handles that kind of stuff. So thank you. Thank you, Shane, and thank you, Stormwater. Um, so with that, Mr. McCarthy?
Um, I just want to tell a similar story. And I'll make this real quick. In my rental property, uh, the renters called me up and said, there is an unbelievable river flowing out of our meter box. And I didn't know who to call, so I called the police non-emergency number. And I says, this is not a police issue, but please help me. They did. They got the fire department out there in five minutes. They turned the water off. Within half an hour, the city water crew was out there and the water meter had failed. They put a new one in. Couple hours later, we're back in business. Everybody just did a great job. I was so proud to be part of um, Team Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we are adjourned.
I had the last word.
You, you did.